Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the school board. Board of Directors meeting. I'm gonna just wait a few moments while the attendees join into the Zoom. Okay. Couple more people are joining in. We'll give it a few more moments. Okay, it's leveled off. It looks like we're ready to get started. Welcome, everybody, to the October 5th, 2020 school board meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Widener for the roll call.
Mr. Door.
Here.
This is Evans Brockett.
Yeah.
Dr. Hallis.
Here.
Dr. Caller.
Here.
This is Lofton.
Here.
This is Mayers.
Here.
This is Roberts.
Here.
Dr. Weston.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here. All present.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Widener. That brings us on to 1.03, the approval of the agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about the agenda? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved. That brings us on to 1.04, our special topic presentation this evening. We're very fortunate to be able to welcome Representative Joe Cerisi. He's here to answer questions for us about things that are going on on a state level. He, the agenda says eight o'clock, he's able to shift up his schedule and be with us at 6:30. So, Mr. Cerisi, we're very excited to have you with us this evening, and we appreciate you adjusting your schedule to be here now. Did you want us to just dive into questions, or did you have anything that you wanted to present for us?
I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm looking forward to when we're all in person again. I do want to say a special birthday to Beth. Happy birthday, Beth. A public servant on the phone during her birthday, so I want to make sure everybody knows that.
Thank you, Mr. Cerisi.
Oh, please, call me Joe. But I'm happy to be here to answer any questions. This has been a challenging time, and I want to thank the nine board members and all the administrators and the teachers who are on this call, and the parents who are putting up with a whole different world that we're all in, and it's a challenge for each and every one of us, and every one of you. So, thank you for what you've been doing to make sure that the children are educated. With that, I'm gonna leave the meeting to you, Judy, for any questions that you may have, or the board has. I'm more than happy to answer.
So I guess my first question to you is about the budget process, and I know that the the state had initially passed a seven-month budget, and we were told that the school funding would be allocated for the full 12 months. But I do have a question, you know, as we move through the year. Where are we standing now? Where is the state standing in the budget, and what does that look like as we start thinking about what our budget's gonna be looking like next year? What are the processes and discussions and sort of status around that?
So, we've been in a little bit of a holding pattern, seeing when we're going to get into the budget. We're hoping that it'll happen post-election, right after the election. There's a lot of talk of if the legislators recall back in December. It usually doesn't happen. When we look at the status of the state right now, we have about a $5.5 billion deficit. We are seeing a little bit push and a change to a little more positive, but there still is a large hole to fill. Education is a top priority of the governor's, and it is what he would like to see at least funded at the level it was funded last year, if nothing more. But right now, that's where we're holding at. So, we don't really have much of an update. We're trying to get through the next few weeks and then dive back into it.
Thank you, Representative Cerisi. So, I'm curious, knowing that, you know, a lot of some of the initiatives that we're working on to try to address the virtual learning needs of students really are grant-dependent. I know that we have many coming from a couple of different places. What initiatives are currently underway coming from Harrisburg to try to help support all the efforts that are going on, on a local level, to help ensure that we're able to provide the services and supports that we need to be doing school in a very different format from what we've had in the past?
We're still looking at the use of some of the CARES money. There's still, I think, a billion dollars of the CARES money that needs to be allocated. So, it's being looked at for programs that, you know, throughout the state that we need for different funding mechanisms in different areas, education being one of them. There has been no real talk of truly how much money we can put in for how they work, for what you're going through as far as the virtual. I think that once, and I hate to keep going back to this, but with four weeks to an election, there's a lot of holding that's going on to see what happens in four weeks and how we handle this moving forward, what the Education Committee will look like, who will be on the Education Committee. You know that the Secretary is moving on to another position. Secretary of Education is moving on, so there's some shifting going on in the Department of Education right now. We are hearing from schools across the Commonwealth that they do need help with all of the virtual learning and how to implement it. So, that is a topic in the Education Committee that is being discussed, but there hasn't been anything financially done with it yet.
Okay, I have other questions, but does anyone else want to jump in before I keep going? So, my next question is related to, you know, we have a lot of questions around in-person versus virtual experiences and guidance from the state as well as the county as far as looking at, you know, what is considered safe. It seems like, you know, we're hearing different things coming from different sources, and so I'm curious about your thinking around some of the different guidances that we've been getting in that area.
I think what we've seen a lot of is, and I'm gonna say this, Montgomery County, we're blessed to have, be in the county that we live in. Dr. Val Arcush really understands the situation we're in. Montgomery County has handled this well. We're among one of the best counties right now as far as our numbers, although we did see a jump yesterday that was pretty high. We haven't seen one of those in a while. But working with Secretary Levine and working with the Department of Health with the guidelines that they put out. Now, the Secretary of Education and the Governor and the Secretary of Health have all said that they've given this responsibility back to the local decision-makers to decide what's best for the children and the staff, and they want to make sure everyone stays safe. So, we're waiting or watching what all of you do. I know that, I think you're due to start, you have some kids who've come back, right, in person already? I know Springford is working on theirs, Pot Town and Potts Grove are also having, when they're going to do it, but like Twin Valley, I know has been back. I think almost all their kids are back full-time up the road. All the districts are working in a different place. You need to monitor the situation. You've seen what the guidelines are. Like I said, if you go by Montgomery County guidelines and the Department of Health for the PA State, I think you'll be in a good place. We don't want to see anyone be put in jeopardy. And for those parents who feel uncomfortable sending their children back to school, to give them the option of being virtual, which I think we'll see a lot, you know, it's probably about 30% or more of the parents sending their kids virtually back to school, which is posing a challenge. I know, especially for Dr. Russell, you know, as the education side with teachers, it is a challenge and how you handle it. I know we've been talking about how we waive some of the requirements. There was a little bit of an argument on the floor when it came time to waive the keystones. Some representatives were upset that we were, excuse why I'm about to say it, but dumbing down the system. And I don't think that's what's happening at all. I think we're trying to find a way to make sure every child has the opportunity they have. I don't know if that answered your question, Judy, but I tried to give as much information as I could.
No, I appreciate that, and that actually leads to another question that I had, because I, you know, I'm curious about the what the obligations are going to be around standardized testing, and so, you know, I know that there is a change related to the keystones. It's my understanding that the federal government is not going to allow waivers regarding the PSSAs, but, you know, I didn't know if there was any discussion around adjusting any of that testing for some of the younger students as well, and what, if there's going to be any flexibility in those requirements.
We're looking to see where we can give flexibility without hurting public education. The federal government, I can't speak for at all, but I know that within the State House, at least on my side of the State House, and not, I mean, the State House, as far as the House of Representatives and not the Senate, the conversation has been happening of what we can do for education. We are going through a lot of election law reforms that you probably have heard about, which has taken a little bit more of the front burner in some places. But this is one of the things that we're trying to find a way, and I, this is not a Democratic or Republican agenda. I think we're together on this one. I think that there's a lot of support to find the best road for public education. And I have to, you know, praise Kurt Sonny, who's Representative Sonny, who's the Republican Chair of Education, that he really wants to find the way that we can do this the right way.
Okay, other questions I have are, has there been any movement in relationship to charter reform?
Well, I've been pushing hard to move that bill forward. As a matter of fact, as I sit here at my desk, there was, there's another charter reform, this charter school funding from Representative Tomlinson. A legislator was implementing recommendations of Special Ed Funding Commission to apply the same funding principles used in the formula for school districts to determine a payment for special ed. So she's talking about some of the special ed reform. But 2261, which is the bill we're trying to pass, which would save almost 300 million, is sitting and waiting again post-election. I hate to keep saying post-election, but we don't set the agenda, the Speaker of the House does, and the bill is waiting to get on the floor and in front of the committee. But there is a lot of support. Even people who are charter school, who fact charter schools are also saying we do have to do reform. It's over 20 years, and we have to go back and look at how we fund this. So, keep your fingers crossed that within the next three to four months, we see this movement of this bill. And others.
Okay. Well, that's all the questions I have. Does anyone else have any questions that they wanted to ask of Mr. Door?
Mr. Cerisi, first, thank you for being here this evening. I was curious if the state, you're welcome, if the state is actively collecting data from all the different districts around the state, you know, if whether they open, whether they did hybrid, all the different versions, in the hopes that might, more guidance might come back from the state, seeing what's working, just because we only know what we know in this area?
I've asked the same question. What do we have yet of data? I don't think there are many districts that are open right now, so they really haven't gone to that level to really collect much. They're trying to find the way that this new program works. Of course, the hope is that sooner than later, we can be back to a normal status, but I don't know about any of that as of yet. But I'll go back and see what I can find out, if there is anything more that they do have. They haven't shared a lot with us on that front yet, because it's just too new.
Thank you.
Hi, Joe. It's Sarah Evans Brockett. How are you?
Good, good to see you.
Good to see you. I know the House did not take action on a school voucher plan, the latest iteration of that, but there was supposed to be hearings in the Senate Education Committee today. Do you have any update on that?
I didn't see the hearings. I was in and out of the office a lot. I know it has not come to the House floor. I am not a fan of this at all. The only way I'd support any of this is if the vouchers help public education only. So, from what I heard even from our House, there wasn't a lot of appetite for this. So, I'm hoping that this doesn't move any further than within a committee hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. So, Representative Cerisi, I just want to, again, extend a huge thank you. I know your schedule's incredibly busy. I really appreciate you taking the time to be here this evening and answer questions.
Well, thank you all. I mean, we're always, I'm always available. If you have any questions, email me, call me. I think most of you have my cellphone number. Facebook message me. If any of the constituents need anything from us, please feel free to reach out to myself and the office and my office staff. Again, I want to thank all of you for what you've been doing. I know this has been a battle. It's been rough, but we're all doing it together. It's every day, it's a new adventure. But we will find a solution, and thank you. Thanks for having me. Again, happy birthday, Beth.
Thank you, Joe.
See you later.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too.
Okay, so that brings us back to our agenda now. We're gonna move on. Section 1.05, comments on any topic. Comments from the audience are accepted on any topic. Mrs. Widener, did we receive any written comments in advance of the meeting?
We did not.
Okay. So, there are no comments attached here. Attendees, if you want to make a comment, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Everyone, you can make a comment for up to three minutes. Please begin by stating your name and the municipality in which you live. So, I'm not seeing any hands raised. I'll give everybody just another moment. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we'll move on to section two on reports. And we'll start with 2.01, the student leaves on report, and I will turn it over to Ms. McGovern and Mr. Smith.
Not much to report on my end. As we know, students, freshmen and some special education students are back in the building, and so far, I believe it's going pretty well. I was there this last week for Link Crew, and I think many people are excited to have some kind of return to normalcy.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. McGovern.
I have a question for Ms. McGovern. Maggie, are you, how are, what are you hearing from, from the, from your peers in regards to some of the issues surrounding masking and social distancing? Are they adapting, or are there any specific issues that they would like to see addressed?
That's a good question, Mrs. Roberts. So, and happy birthday, by the way. So, obviously, I can't represent the entire student body, especially because my outreach is typically towards seniors and upperclassmen. But as I do help out with Link Crew, I did meet with a lot of the freshmen, and it seems as though people are a little concerned about that, but at the same time, the guidelines of social distancing and mask-wearing have kind of become like conditionary now. People know what to do, and I think that social distancing is a little hard at the high school, and I think people know that. I think, like, even in the hallways, especially in classrooms, you know, you're sitting six feet apart at a desk, but in the hallways and in other cases, social distancing is a challenge, I think, for many people. I haven't heard too much on mask-wearing. I know that prior to students re-entering, there was a lot of debate with it. Some people thought students would be totally fine with wearing masks as they should, and others were worried they wouldn't put it over their nose, or people would take them off, you know, to make a joke or something like that. From the freshmen this week, I haven't heard too much. And from the upperclassmen, obviously, they're not in school, but I have heard the kind of the same debate as you might be hearing with some of the PV community.
Thank you, Maggie.
Okay, thank you again, Ms. McGovern. We'll move on to the President's Report. I don't have anything to report this month, so I will turn it over to Dr. Russell for section 2.03, the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to extend thanks to Representative Cerisi for taking some time out of his very busy schedule to entertain our questions, and also give a shout out to Mr. Karthik Ganesh, our Chief Information Officer. I don't know how many meetings he helps us get set up for, but your presence is very much appreciated. So, thank you. Shout out to you and your team, actually. So, let me mention, let me share with you three topics I'd like to touch upon this evening. On-site instruction. How's it going? We introduced some students back this past week. I'll give you a sense of what it looks like in our classrooms and talk a little bit about the experience as an individual observing. And then we'll talk about athletics, marching band, and cheerleading, and this aspect of these activities involving attendees and spectators. Lots of questions around these. I'd like to try and share with you where we are in our knowledge and what next steps we're planning to take to clarify some things. And then finally, discuss with you our phased reopening plan and some considerations. Again, I want to bring to you and the public some questions that have been posed about that. So, as, as we have discussed in the past, beginning last Tuesday, September 29, presuming we met specific board-approved criteria, we were able to bring groups of students back. These are the criteria. We brought back kindergarten, first and second grade at the elementary level, sixth grade and ninth grade. And those K through 2 students are attending on a half-day schedule, so very intensified, if you will, but consistent time with their teacher in the classroom. Those numbers are about half of what they would typically be. So, we're able to accommodate the social distancing, and our students are doing a really good job of wearing their masks and learning and realizing that social distance. So, I appreciate their efforts. At sixth grade, at the sixth grade level, in the middle school, we've divided our students in both schools in half, and they both attend on a hybrid schedule. We have a group one and a group two. At the high school level here, in ninth grade, where we've brought that first third of students back, the entire school has been divided into thirds, and we began with ninth graders coming in. Class sizes are very small right now. The most I've seen is about five. So, plenty of opportunity for our students to acclimate to that social distancing and those habits that we now must instill upon them, wearing masks, washing their hands, considering what they touch and how frequently they touch. So, these are the metrics that we were expected to meet, and we continue to be within the ranges necessary. These are today's data. You can see the incidence rate. This was pulled today from the Early Warning Monitoring System dashboard. This is the state's website. And the percent positivity did increase just a little bit. It was 2.3 last week, and it is now 2.5. However, still a good position for us, according to Dr. Arcush. So, when we look to the elementary level, just to give you a sense, we have lots of markings on the floor. In this first picture, students are entering through the gymnasium or the, I'm sorry, cafet- cafeteria, excuse me. This is at South, and they're coming in from the buses. There are lots of markings in the hall, not so many here in this area, however, being coached to consider the distance between themselves and others. This is a kindergarten classroom where the teacher just happened to be leading a lesson about washing hands with kindergarten students. They were having snacks, so you will notice that there are some students without a mask, they're taking a mask break while they have snack. This does happen during the day with our students. And then over here, you can see a student walking down the hall. So, again, our staff are working diligently to help our students realize the new normal in school. And these are some secondary pictures that were captured. This was the first day of school for our ninth graders, and they moved through an orientation process that started in the competition gymnasium, and they were spread out in the bleachers as they were then led through some orienting and different activities by Link Crew and Mr. Burke. This is a classroom, this is a science classroom. This classroom had five students in it, and these are ninth-grade students participating in earth systems, and this is a student in a business class. And this is one of our ninth-grade social studies teachers, Mr. Poysden, and he was talking about some of the real successes that our teachers have experienced, as well as some of the challenges that they're experiencing. This is a very different way for our staff to deliver this service, and it's not easy. And we're working to accommodate them, not only with the PPE that we've talked about, to feel comfortable in the setting, but also with the hardware and the resources. You can see here, Mr. Poysden has a second monitor. He has his laptop, and he has a webcam. And he had students over here in his classroom, and he is struggling, and they are struggling with the audio because they're not all wearing headsets. And when students in the classroom log into Zoom, while students through the computer are also in Zoom, you sometimes get that echo that we were experiencing this evening. So, our staff are working hard to figure out how to strike that balance. This, the delivery of instruction to both groups has certainly posed some challenges for us that we continue to try and work through. Our elementary team avoided that, and that was something they thought a lot about with the elementary students, and why they really advocated for that half-day. Our secondary staff are working their way through it and, and really doing a nice job at trying to figure out how they make the best of the situation. However, if you have children in our schools at the secondary level, you may be experiencing some difficulties there with the teachers trying to bring them all together because of the audio, and that's something we really want. We really want all kids to feel a part of the class, and our teachers are working to find ways to be able to make that happen. The audio has been the biggest challenge in doing that. We continue to work on it. For the most part, I'll echo what, what Ms. McGovern shared. Students are really, they're happy to be back in the buildings, and they're enthusiastic about being here and seem to be very quickly realizing the respect for the different approaches that we mount, that we now must take, that we need to have in place in terms of the health and safety guidelines. So, really pleased with how our students are doing, and again, a shout out to our teachers. A very different way for them to be delivering the service. Let's talk about athletics, marching band, and cheerleading. We had our first home game this past Friday, and as you know, we had anticipated providing each player, marching band member, and cheerleader with two tickets to invite individuals of their choice to come out and watch them play. It was really interesting how the events played out last week in terms of court rulings and county ideas, and at any rate, with the overturning of the federal case, federal court decision by the Third Circuit on Thursday, indicating Governor Wolf's mandate, his order of 250 outside and 25 inside at school events was back in effect, we backed away from then allowing two tickets per family. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. The game went well. The students that were there did a nice job. We, we, we need to continue to reinforce the the steps that mitigate the spread of the virus. So, somebody asked me about the team rooms, for example, and we have 81 young men on our football team, 81. I think that's one of the highest numbers that I've ever heard. It's a large team. So, the question was, does the team meet in the team room at, prior to the game and at halftime? That's a really good question, and I didn't know the answer at the time. However, I do now know the answer. It's no. Other than in small groups. So, the coach will take in 12 to 15 at a time, as did the away team, but not the entire team. So, again, our coaches are working diligently to not only coach the students in the activity they're leading, but to coach them in these health and safety guidelines that they must uphold. Now, there certainly were aspects of some of what our students or how they were engaging that we are revisiting and reviewing. Again, we continue to coach our students and encourage them in the things that we know must be in place, holding them accountable, as well as the adults leading them to keep them as safe as possible. So, we'll see what happens. Our next home football game is October 16th, and we're hoping that we will be able to have some spectators and attendees to support our students. More to come on that in just a few minutes, and I'll talk a little bit more about the details of next steps there. But I did want to bring you up to date, in addition, speaking of athletics, on how the middle schools played out. So, initially, our numbers were a bit low. So, for example, here at West, it would be difficult to lead a team, a field hockey team with 13. You could do it, but it would be tight. Voice soccer with only 16. with only 16. These numbers have actually increased since just before last week. And we had decided to combine the middle school, East and West groups to form one team that will probably end up with not just two teams, like a seventh grade and an eighth grade team, if you will, but maybe even three. So Mr. Galanski does have access to coaches. He is looking at possibilities to divide the students, maybe not just into two teams, eighth and seventh, but possibly into three, orange, brown and white, or something like that. Attempting to afford all students as much of the activity time as possible. So this 59, that's a pretty big number for two girls soccer team. So thinking about three there and then with the boys soccer. But we're appreciative of the students being able to participate. Coaches again are working with our students on the expectations. Parents seem really pleased to be able to have their children participate. So middle school sports up and running as of last Wednesday. So a little bit more about the spectators. I mentioned the governor's order stipulates 250 total people at an outdoor event, 25 at an indoor event. And there was a court decision that declared that unconstitutional. The Pioneer Athletic Conference had decided as a league, and they have a lot of authority to decide these things, that they would support two tickets per player, band member, cheerleader, as I mentioned. And then last Thursday, the Third Circuit overturned that unconstitutionality of the governor's order and the 250, 25 was back in effect. The Montgomery County Office of Public Health has introduced to us, to school districts in Montgomery County, what they're calling a permitting process. And they are indicating that they will review a detailed plan submitted by a school district that has a schematic that talks about capacity, a proposal for how many people you would like to invite into your stadium or your competition gym or your pool, your auditorium. And then they will review the details of what you, what you submit and approve it. And right now, they believe that legally, they are in a position to override the governor's order. So there are some questions about that in terms of the legality. I'm working very closely with Mr. Subers on that. However, as we try and tease that out and submit a plan to the county, I would like to propose to you as a board, consideration for that two tickets per player, band member, cheerleader be permitted, presuming we're able to maintain six feet of social distancing. We've determined we can do that in the stadium if 81 players, 75 band members and 19 cheerleaders get two tickets each, considering coaches, referees, officials, and a visiting team of about 60 players plus coaches. We have measured out six feet of social distance and made markings in the stadium in the hopes that at some point, we'll be able to have some number of attendees. There are also questions about the competition gym. It has a capacity of 2,000. So is it possible to consider more than 25? We can't get any spectators in right now with a 25 limit, based on the number of volleyball players, for example, coaches, referees and officials. And in fact, at times, players are sent out into the hall because they exceed the 25 in the gym. Again, the capacity is 2,000. We can maintain social distancing in that facility with a few more than 25. So what I'd like to propose is that I continue in conversation with the Office of Public Health and submit a proposal to them. It doesn't, it's not a very lengthy proposal. They've given us very specific data to submit to them and, and identified requests. And then I'd like to propose an update to the Athletics Health and Safety Plan, presuming Mr. Subers agrees that the county has the authority to override the governor's order. Even if he does not, there could be a statement in our plan that indicates, in the event this changes, this is a step that we would be comfortable taking, presuming these criteria are in place. So I'd like to start to develop that and present it to you by Thursday this week, when you get your weekly communication and then consider approval if we're in a position and ready to do that next week. So the spectators issue has a lot of legal aspects to it right now and a lot of questions. And we're hearing the school down the street did this thing, that school in Bucks County did that thing, you made us do this thing. And what we did was uphold the governor's order. So we're working through what we're actually able to do now that the county, and they voted on this last Wednesday night as a board, now that the county has opened a different door for us. So stay tuned and I'll follow up with you on that. But I know a lot of our parents are very interested in seeing their children compete and participate with them. Dr. Kohler?
I just had a question based on what you just mentioned, because I have heard that other districts have, have been permitting spectators and they're not upholding these 250, 25 guidelines. So how did these other districts get around it? Are they just not following the guidelines? And it just didn't make sense to me when I heard that.
I would presume that they, they are just not following the guidelines because this permit process is a new process and you have to go through an application to get your permit approved. Again, this is all fast moving. The Third Circuit entered to stay on Thursday. PIA came out the same day acknowledging the Third, Third Circuit stay and indicating that it was their recommendation to follow the 25, 250 limit. The interesting distinction is the lawsuit that was brought, was brought by rural counties in the western part of the state that do not have departments of health. So we do. So that could be a distinction. I spoke to Dr. Russell this afternoon. I'll be contacting the county solicitor and the Office of Public Safety Solicitor tomorrow to discuss, you know, the, the basis of their opinion that they have the authority. Again, to the extent that it's available, you know, we'll, we will follow up with the application for the permit. So yeah, before, but yeah, there's, there's people who are just disregarding the, the governor's executive order.
So are there, I'm sorry.
Are you looking for more discussion on this now?
I was just going to invite other questions. I think it would be really helpful if you have other questions at this point to share them. Yes.
Well, I guess I was going to offer an opinion as opposed to a question. Okay. So I think part of what was frustrating to people in particular about the guidelines is, as you mentioned, we're limited to having 25 people in a room that has a capacity of 2,000. And I heard, I heard the joke that maybe we just make people buy stuff from the concession stand and then it's called a restaurant and then we could have a thousand people in the room. So, you know, I think it's sort of the, there's a lot of different inconsistencies that we're seeing with how different rules are being applied in different places. And so I think the logic of wanting to, you know, wanting to ensure that we have all the processes and steps in place to ensure that people are, are being safe. It seems to me like we are able to do that while also allowing parents to be able to see their kids play, which, you know, I've been hearing a lot from people that that's really important to them. So, you know, it's certainly something I would support moving forward with.
Great. Thank you.
I would just want some more information on what the liability of the district would be and if our insurance company would cover us if there was a case because we're going, we're not following the governor's order. Will, will they go along with that the county has a permitting option? So just more questions about legally where we stand.
I was saying, we'll follow that, follow up with that as part of our investigation and inquiry and I'll discuss the insurance aspects with Mr. Weaver and he can follow up with the district's insurance broker.
I see Mrs. Roberts has her hand up.
Yeah, the question I have, you say that there are other school districts or that the word is, is there are other school districts that are not abiding by this particular, by the governor's guidelines? Do we have any information regarding the impact of, of, of that on the infection rate in those particular districts? Or do we just take them at their word and say they're perfectly safe? I mean, because if we, if we're able to show that representatively, we have fewer infections in our district than they do in those districts, it might be a way to justify why we're doing what we're doing. If, you know, because just to say we're following the rules probably isn't going to make much of impression if parents, what they want. But if we can show them documentation that the way we're doing things is actually protecting their children and them better than other districts in the area who are not following those guidelines.
Well, you know, to follow on to that, I think maybe the question we should be asking is, is there evidence that any of these events where spectators were allowed turned into super spreader events? Because I think, you know, just as our discussion around the liability questions has been, you know, it's really difficult to pinpoint where you were exposed unless there was some sort of a super spreader event. I think it would be really difficult to draw the conclusion that a virus rate is higher in a, in a district because they allow spectators at events because you have no idea what all the other factors are that come into play there. So it might be interesting if we look to see what the super spreader events, if, if there's any documentation of something like that happening.
It's just being widely publicized that a lot of these infection rates, spikes in infection rate have to do with athletic participation. And I don't know whether that slops over onto the spectators or not, or whether it's simply the athletes participating. But if we can, if we can get a little bit more information in regards to that, it might be helpful.
Dr. Hallis, I see you put your hand up.
Yeah, I have a question. Is that kind of parallels, but what both Mrs. Lofton and Mrs. Roberts asked. Is there any, in terms of the guidelines, is there anything? I'm trying to think of exactly how to phrase it that, that, that places it in sort of situationally. In other words, I'm not too concerned about parents in football stands out in the open air. They're six feet apart. They're probably safer than the football players in the pileup. Now, but move to a swimming pool where ventilation is notoriously not the best. You know, are there guidelines from the government? Because I'm, I'm not concerned about them so much out in the football field. But the pool, you know, an indoor closed pool in a very humid environment that doesn't necessarily always have the best ventilation system. So that it's, it's, you know, as we, we look at this, I think we have to look to, and it was, you know, sort of a question raised to, you know, here's the volleyball team in a 2,000 person gymnasium and they can only have 25 in and they're sending some of the kids out into the hallway. Odds are they can probably keep those kids in the gym because it's 2,000 and we can probably let some spectators. But an indoor pool is a different situation, I think. You know, and, and there may be, you know, other things like that, a wrestling meet, you know, and I, I just don't know what the, you know, if there is any guidance, but I think it's those sort of situations vary so much. And I know people probably hate to hear that because everybody wants to see their kid play. But, you know, bringing in, you know, a number of people into an enclosed indoor swimming pool strikes me as being really different than an outdoor football stadium. And that there, there, there needs to, I think, be some thought put to that. That's all.
I see Mrs. White has her hand up.
Thanks. To, to build on what Dr. Hallis has said, I, I think that a lot of the concern is, is warranted with regards to safety because, you know, okay, for the inside activity, I completely agree about the outside activities. I think that's a different category of risk. But once activities come indoors, you know, even though the gym can, you know, fit 2,000 people with six feet of distance, obviously we can exceed 25. The players themselves are all unmasked while they're playing. So I think that adds another element to just the air quality and to the risk associated with the number of people now in the vicinity of unmasked participants. And so I, I realize that the, the guidelines that we're trying to follow don't take all of these different levels into account. But at the same time, above and beyond guidelines, I think there needs to be a judgment call in place, not for what is necessarily common sense, but what airs on the side of caution to protect all folks. And so regardless of the point of we'll sell concessions and then therefore, you know, we'll just call it a restaurant so we can have more occupancy. You know, that type of mindset is what is a reoccurring theme of justification, I guess, for lack of a better word, without taking into all of the different factors, you know, associated with restaurants, that people are seated in one spot, that people, you know, it's, it's a different, it's a different dynamic than a gym where, where spectators are watching a high aerobic activity happen with multiple components. So, you know, to, to the point that there is any data to draw on to make an informed decision, again, this is all happening in real time. And, and I think that we've done a very good job of trying to baby step toward progress, but not opening the floodgates. So to, I understand frustration. I just think that it's premature until we see how some of these things play out. To the point of, of community education and community at activities in our gyms as well. I, I think that those, those particular events, should they go forward and we see how they pan out, then we can make a more educated decision towards spectators of student events. You know, what I'm saying, like one, one thing can't come before another. And I, and I just don't understand why, you know, now we've sort of lifted the, the edge of some of this return to normalcy. And now we want to just rip the Band-Aid off. And I don't think that we're really in a position to do that just yet.
I don't think anyone's, so I mean, I was being a little facetious in saying that we would have a thousand people in the gym. I think.
No, no, I, I understand. I understand.
Advocate. But it's just, no, I mean, the point is that, yeah, I think that there's a lot of a consistency and looking at, again, you know, I think, looking at wanting to ensure that people are adequately distanced and spaced. And, you know, maybe if we can actually break that down and see how far apart people could be if you had two players or two tickets per player and how far they would actually be away. You know, if we could learn just a little bit more about some of the ventilation. Because, you know, I think, I think that the frustration is that things are so widely inconsistent.
No, and I absolutely agree with that, Judy. And I wasn't, I know that that's what, not what you were saying. But to the point of what you did say, that really is literally what some people say. That's literally how some people think. And so the thing that I think that we need to continue to tug the line, line on, and I think that we've really been diligent about it, and I'm very proud that we've been diligent about it, is it kind of the noise can't of, of these types of like quote unquote arguments now can't become our guiding principle. Our guiding principle still needs to be because we don't, we haven't had any guidance this whole time, because there are so many inconsistencies. You know, life is not black and white. I, I think that we still need I, I think that we still need to continue staying the course of doing what's best for us collectively as a community, despite the fact that it does seem that there are inconsistencies between what's allowed and what's not allowed. And, and, you know, why are the players on the sidelines allowed to be close together without masks on? But, you know, the band in the stands is all spread apart with masks on. You know, there are inconsistencies within us just trying to find our way with this, that there has to be some trial and error for sure. But I don't know that we should be tempting any fates or just, you know, kind of like I said, opening the floodgates.
Mrs. Marris.
I like the idea of the permit process because it gives our health county commissioner the opportunity to, who I would, you know, I'm assuming we're relying on her for the science and all of that. Because I think Dr. Hollis raises a great question of pool indoors, poor ventilation versus outside. So I guess I'm going to say I'm looking forward to hearing what our county health commissioner is going to recommend and allow as we go forward, looking at the different sports and the different venues where they'll be played and seeking her advice also.
Any other thoughts from anybody? Questions? I really appreciate the feedback and the ventilation point, Dr. Hollis, is one that has not been raised. I really appreciate that. Having spoken to some very dedicated water polo parents, one today in particular. And, and also to Ms. White's point, we, we want to take steps very thoughtfully as we move forward. And I will share that the county is not intending to afford any district, at least in their preliminary conversations with us, with 50% capacity. In fact, I'm worried we may not be able to accommodate two tickets per football band cheerleading because Val Arquish, Dr. Arquish is also very conservative in her approach. And she's taking small steps forward as we navigate this pandemic. And some of the really good things we're seeing right now and experiencing as part of it. So we don't want to take a misstep where we sacrifice some of the good and the positive we are seeing. So I, I believe that she will be pretty conservative. However, your messages tonight and your comments, very helpful. As we, as we engage in conversation and confirm what's actually possible under the law, we'll come back to you with some ideas that are more concrete. So I appreciate the feedback. And the last thing I want to talk about, I want to bring into the public some questions that have been posed to me around shifting up, moving up the phased reopening plan from, for example, that last group coming back to school November 9th to possibly a date that's sooner. Now, I, I, I called out some of the things that we are thinking about right now as an admin teaching staff. There are lots of parents who are advocating for their children to be back in school sooner rather than later. And I'm pretty sure you've heard that feedback as well. The parents of students that are now in school attending onsite seem to be really pleased with that. Those that prefer the virtual seem to be okay with that situation for their children. Those that are continuing to plan to have more of their children or their children be onsite are looking forward to that. And we certainly believe that onsite instruction, that face to face, tends to be one of the most effective ways to support learning in the majority of students. Now, this hybrid model is different. It's a bit of a game changer. And it has its challenges, as I mentioned a few minutes ago. However, this is something that is a part of our discussion. So please know that, as I mentioned, this idea of shifting up that timeline from November 9th to maybe November 2nd or October 26th, the two Mondays prior, there was a little bit of agita that, that was created on the part of some. And here's why. Number one, we don't have all the equipment that we really do need. We have students still using personal devices. They don't have their school issued Chromebook and their devices aren't as quality, high quality. Some of our students are using very old devices and they too are lacking in quality. So they're not as sufficient, efficient as we would like. And Mr. Ganesh is really on top of these companies and everybody's waiting for Chromebooks. We're not alone in this. However, we are waiting for Chromebooks and it would certainly be helpful prior to students coming back with their personal device if they had a school issued device. We're also waiting on equipment for our teachers. So our teachers have been given, they've been provided a second monitor, which has helped them navigate if they're leading in a hybrid manner, students on a Zoom, their guidance, if you will, maybe their Google presentation or their notes, and then the students in their classroom. Additionally, we've ordered webcams. We tested them out. Mr. Ganesh has one up and running this evening. It gives you a sense of the entire space you may be leading. So for a teacher, it can be very helpful. And it also affords the students in the Zoom room the opportunity to see the students in the classroom. And that's really important as we try and engage all students. However, we're still waiting on some of that equipment too. And headsets, again, to improve that audio, the possibility of microphones. So some of these pieces of equipment as we bring in 7th, 8th, 10th, 11th will be really helpful. We do have-
So I'm sorry if I can interrupt for a minute.
Absolutely.
Do we know when those are coming? Do we, do we have an update on expected arrival for the Chromebooks? Because I remember hearing they were going to come in October. Are we still expecting them to arrive this month?
Well, we're hearing it could be October, but maybe now November for the, for the Chromebooks. So again, Mr. Ganesh and his team are working diligently with the company. However, there is a serious backlog, so it may be a little bit later than October. Webcams should be in sooner and some of this other equipment. Is that correct, Mr. Ganesh?
Yeah, about 50 webcams already that's been distributed and the remaining 175 or so, it could be November. So we have all the monitors in, the second monitors that we ordered, they all in. So the, the second batch of the monitors will be distributed next week or so. We're still waiting on the webcams, which could, the second batch could be into November. We're still waiting on the headphones again, which could be into November. And the Chromebooks would be in November as well. Again, these are all scheduled to be in October, but now they've pushed the delivery to November.
So, oh, I see Mrs. Marris has a question, but I want to ask a question too. For elementary, once the students come back into the half day full time, can they turn back in their Chromebooks? Do they still need to have a one-to-one Chromebook if they are in person for, you know, the halftime full time? And are we able to reallocate those Chromebooks then to the secondary level once they come back in?
That's a great question because it'll take me to some valuable information, I think, for some individuals. So the question of whether or not elementary students can turn in their Chromebook because they, they don't need it, the answer is no, because in the afternoon they're asynchronous and they tap into their special in a synchronous manner. So they still need a device. And we're, we've worked really diligently to provide every family that's asked for one with a device. Some a little bit better than others. But our tech team, again, Mr. Ganesh has led and really found a device for any family who's asked for a device. So they will still need them. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right.
Can I just jump in and make one comment? I'm sorry. Just, I would be hesitant to have students give up those devices just because we don't know what COVID is going to do in the fall. And we could find ourselves just as quickly back in the situation we found ourselves last spring. And then to have to ask Mr. Ganesh to scramble and, you know, reprogram computers to get them back to students who had them. I think who's got them should keep them and go forward. Sorry.
All right. No. All right.
I'm wondering what number of Chromebooks we're waiting for. I think we were told a while ago, I'm sorry, I forget, but what's the number we're looking for?
It's about 1,500. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr.-
Sorry. It's closer to 1,300 Chromebooks.
Okay. And I see Mrs. White has her hand up.
Yep, thank you. Um, so just to clarify, the, the Chromebooks we're waiting for students, correct? And then the, the other, the other items, the other technology pieces are cam, webcams, and then second monitors, those are for teacher classrooms? Is that, do I understand it?
That is correct. Yes.
And, and I guess my, my only question with regards to, and, and this is sort of a sidebar a little bit. Does every teacher, will, will every teacher get a webcam and will every teacher get a second monitor? Or is it only subject teachers or what? Did that have to be requested? How is that allocated?
So every teacher got a second monitor. We were intentional about that because it's, it's, there's research behind how individuals tend to be more productive with that second monitor. And when we surveyed teachers, they really appreciated the opportunity to have a second monitor. With respect to webcams, only secondary level teachers received webcams and are receiving webcams because they are dealing with that hybrid classroom environment. Whereas elementary have the students right there in front of them. So they really don't have a need for a webcam.
That, that makes sense. And so with regards to the secondary teachers, does that cover special areas, electives as well? You know, band, orchestra, chorus, art?
Every secondary level teacher will receive a webcam. Yep. It, it covers every area, whether it's a core subject or an elective.
Fair enough. And now has the timeline been communicated to them that they know these things are coming? Or how, how has all of that played out in terms of the update? Understanding that although the, we need those things to jive, right? We need the devices there the same time the students are there ideally. Have, have the teachers been kept abreast of the progress of, oh, you're going to be seeing it in a couple of weeks and we'll get you set up? Like, how will they be implemented once they arrive?
We have a system, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, we have a draft email, Mrs. White, that is actually ready to go out hopefully tomorrow. We were trying to update the ETAs on all of those things. So teachers would have an idea of when they will be receiving them as they, you know, they've heard about some of these things, but trying to give them more concrete information. The webcams that we already distributed were distributed on our last half day on September 23rd and included then a demonstration of how to use it, how to connect it, and a discussion about what, you know, what might be the best use of it. So when we receive the next batch, our plan would be to do the same with the next group of teachers. The principals really helped us to identify how to prioritize who should get those first 50.
Okay, that's, that's great. Yeah, those, they're all tie into my same sort of train of thought with that. Because obviously there's, there's the receiving it and then there's the rollout. So I appreciate you clarifying.
Thank you, Mrs. White. So-
Mrs. Evans.
So how many of our sixth grade and ninth grade teachers do not have webcams right now? Or do they all, as they're teaching, live stream?
All but 50, right?
So all of the sixth grade core teachers currently have a webcam. And the ninth grade, you know, because we have mixed classes, it's hard to say exactly how many of them have that. But again, Dr. Moss helped to prioritize the classes that have the most ninth graders in them. So a lot of our core, like our ELA, our social studies, you know, the math or science got them first. Our next batch would be prioritized to special areas and electives that have sixth and ninth graders. And then, and of course, making sure our special ed teachers are also included in there if they need them as well.
Okay. So I appreciate the questions. Mrs. White, Mrs. Smith, excuse me. And Mr. Ganesh have attempted to be very systematic with the distribution of this hardware and this equipment. So I appreciate being able to share some of that information for the benefit of the public as well. As I move on down the list and we think about any kind of shift to our phased reopening, we do have staffing considerations and we have afforded some staff opportunities to work from home until their students return to onsite instruction. We're not certain what decision they will make as we approach that time. So we are thinking about that. Mr. Moran is working very carefully with Mr. Alabak on staying in touch with staff who have differing needs and may benefit from some sort of flexibility or accommodation on the part of the district. We're working closely with them on that. And certainly we continue to monitor our supplies of PPE. We've mentioned to you, we have a lot of PPE, but we don't have enough PPE for the entire year. So Mr. Weaver is very carefully monitoring that inventory and attempting to stay on top of it. So as an administrative team, as we entertain these questions and think about, should we move up that November 9th date to something sooner? These are some of the thoughts that emerge in response and the questions that come back. So stay tuned. I'll continue to provide you with some information. And if you have additional questions or thoughts, happy to hear them.
So Dr. Russell, oh, sorry. Well, actually I saw, Mrs. White, your hand was up and I wasn't sure if that was up from before, if you had a new question. Okay. Mrs. Evans, Sparkit?
Thank you. I just noticed that you had the definitely custodial staff. And I had wanted to ask about that anyway, because now our food services staff are starting to be needed more for preparing food because we're offering breakfast and lunch with all of our students that are in school. So where are we with custodial staff now? Because mostly it was those people filling in to provide the extra cleaning that needed to happen with the safety.
Yes. So to that point, which is why I called that out, we're going to need more custodial staff. So right now, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Clemmer, Mr. Moran are working on posting for substitute custodians right now is what they're calling them. So we've replaced or in the process of replacing two openings and they have those candidates. However, we're working on replacing those food service individuals that right now are putting in several hours a day for us as substitute custodians. But you're right, they're going to go back to food service. So we are starting that process of looking for substitute custodians to backfill because in a month or so from now, that's what we're going to need, if, you know, presuming we move forward. So yeah, so we're working on that right now.
And so then, Mr. Weaver, could you provide a finance, the finance meeting on Thursday, some costs of that? Because we had gotten costs with being able to do that with the food services staff. But now if we're having to add custodial, what is that going to mean budgetary wise?
Absolutely. We can look into that.
Okay. Um, the question that I had was, does the board need to take any action if we adjust the date? I know that we had approved in August allowing administration to, you know, set the guidelines around which we would follow for reopening. But then we also approved later the phased reopening. So does it, does additional action need to be taken by the board? Or is this something that administration can continue to monitor and communicate based on the situation as it's unfolding? Do you need some sort of an action from us next week to authorize you to adjust the timing?
I think, Dr. Russell, that it would be appropriate to get the board action because they approved the existing phased reopening schedule.
So I appreciate that advice, Mr. Subers, and which is why I wanted to include the motion. I know that we had been afforded some autonomy in some of the decision making. However, it was not clear as if that was a piece of it. So I appreciate you offering that advice. So if we continue through this week in our conversations and want to propose something to you, we'll bring it to you next week. So hopefully I've set the stage and giving you some sense of some of the things that we're thinking about as some parents do express that idea of their children coming back sooner. I'll continue to gather information and feedback and share something with you on Thursday and hopefully invite some questions and more thoughts from you as well. Okay? Thank you.
And I see Dr. Hollis has his hand up.
I was just going to add that, you know, we were very deliberate about how we thought about opening up. And I just want to see us, you know, kind of adhere to that. I'm, I'm all for moving up the date, but let's make sure- But let's make sure that we do have the custodial staff. Because if we don't, we're going to close real soon. You know, I mean, it's just, it's, so every, let's make sure every piece of the puzzle. I know technology's been a challenge, not just for PV, it's everybody who works in Zoom right now. Zoom is great some days and other days it's haywire. So, you know, whatever we do, and, you know, and again, I'm game to consider moving things up. But I think we have to be very deliberative and very precise and make sure we've got all the various pieces. And if there's places where we, we don't have, I'm going to say the ability to address or we haven't fully addressed because we are moving food service people back, then let's make sure we fill that gap before we take the next step. Because otherwise I see us going from that really good percentage of 2.5, 2.7 in the whole county to something else.
And if I can follow up along those lines, staffing. Like you mentioned that, that some staff have said they're good as long as they're virtual. But if we go back in person, they're not coming. And so I know we had that situation with the ninth grade teachers that, you know, they were approved for their leave the Friday before we started Monday in person. And a sub was hired Sunday. And I, I'm guessing the sub was not up on what the, the health and safety plan is because they taught the first five periods of the day without a mask on. So that is very concerning to me, that we're having to replace staff that quickly and then not making sure that our, our new staff are up on what our health and safety plan are.
So very helpful feedback. And as I mentioned, sort of at the beginning of this section, this has been a very rich discussion and extremely helpful, informative. It has caused some agita in some of our staffing and our school community to think about these shifts for the very reasons that have been pointed out. So I appreciate your thoughts and, and we will continue to investigate and gather the information and share with you. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Russell. Does anyone else have any questions before we move on? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. That brings us on to 2.04, the solicitors report. Mr. Subers, do you have a report this evening?
No report, other than I will be following up with the county solicitor.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to 2.05, Board and District Committee Reports. Those are posted in the agenda. Well, because Dr. Russell wanted to catch up with us. So. Does anyone have anything that they want to add to the Board and District Committee Reports? Has anyone participated in anything this month that they would want to bring forward or discuss? We've got meeting notes from several committees over the past month posted here for anyone who's interested in reviewing them. Okay, I'm not hearing anything. Oh, wait, we'll go back to Zoom. Not seeing any hands up. Okay, we'll move on to section three. Comments on any agenda items, comments from the audience are accepted on any agenda items. Again, I'll just mention anybody who is an attendee who wishes to offer a comment, please begin by stating your name, the municipality within which you live, and if you're an employee, the building in the district that you work in, and you have up to three minutes. And I'm not seeing any hands up at the moment. I'll give just a few more minutes to see if anyone wants to raise a hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands come up. So we'll move on to section 3.02, which is the consent agenda for the meeting. Items that represent standard routine business of the board are included in the consent agenda. Board members may request to have any items removed for discussion. The consent items as of October 5th, 2020 are listed below. Additional agenda items may be added to the consent agenda during the work session meeting. The following items will be added to the consent agenda for approval at the October 12th, 2020 business meeting. 7.10, 8.06, and 8.07. And I'll just remind board members as they go through their sections, if there's no comments, just to indicate that we can move their items to the consent agenda. And we'll move on to section four on education and I'll turn it over to Dr. Koller.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Item 4.01, comments from the audience are accepted on education. I don't believe I see any hands raised. Just give it another second. Okay, it looks like there are no comments. So moving on to item 4.02, the education update, turning it over to Mrs. Smith.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for a few minutes on the education updates. As listed in the agenda, we're going to talk just a little bit about what teaching and learning looks like. Dr. Russell gave you a really good picture of that in her superintendent's report as well. Dr. Boyd will share some special ed updates. And then we did want to show you a little demo of a pilot resource that we are looking at for our secondary science, which is called Gizmos. So teaching and learning, again, just some pictures of what our first couple of days were like. Being able to get into the buildings was certainly exciting and our kids were really excited, as were our teachers. And I would just share that at the elementary level, something that was really exciting and interesting to see was kids were somewhat more comfortable coming in on their first day because they knew their teacher's face already. And so there are little glimmers of positives that maybe we'll even learn from and be able to incorporate into future years. They were able to see their teacher and kind of run up to where, you know, the teacher's area and know where they were going. That bit of anxiety with the first day wasn't there necessarily for them. But again, you can see some classrooms and, and our students just really were so excited to be here, particularly at the elementary. There's a couple other pictures on the next slide. Again, this is a lot of kids in classrooms at the elementary level or waiting in the hallway. And, you know, elementary teachers are extremely creative in many ways. You can see kids walking with their helicopter arms in, in the one picture as they're trying to help them gauge what that social distance should look like. So lots of great things in place to help our youngest learners. In our middle schools, both at East and West, you know, lots of students coming in again, very excited to see their peers. This is Mrs. McQuiggin's classroom, a science classroom at West. And you can see the students kind of spread out there for their science class. And, you know, Dr. Russell pointed out the webcam. You can see that at the front of this classroom as well as the teachers are trying to acclimate to using that and the other technology tools. Similarly, at East, on the next slide, there's, you know, a picture of a classroom. Our students are still using their devices when they are in school. Really, the teacher's lesson design determines if the students in class are joining the Zoom session so they can see and interact with the students at home. Or there are times where the lesson design, that is not necessary. But we are still using those devices a lot in our classrooms, particularly because we're not sharing materials. So a lot of the things that are being given out are still very much digital. So you'll still see our students on devices, even though they may be coming to the school classrooms. You can see lunch there as well. And then with our ninth graders over at the high school, you can see, I know Dr. Russell pointed out the great work of our link crew with Mr. Burke's guidance and some of the kids really still trying to make our ninth graders feel welcome at the high school while maintaining all of these new guidelines. And then again, another classroom there on your right with our students working. Really, I just wanted to share with you that, you know, teaching and learning is off to a great start, given what our circumstances are. And I'm really proud of our teachers for taking on the new technology, new lesson designing, all of these things. And they're working really hard. And I hope that you as parents see that and our community sees that. And we will continue to get, to get better at this as we hope to get our students back in front of us as well. But I'll turn it over to Dr. Boyd now.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Smith. I'd like to reiterate as well what Mrs. Smith says. So proud of our teachers. They're working diligently with our students. And here's some pictures of some of our special education students as they return to the school year. What you can see is, again, the face mask, we're working diligently with that and allowing some face mask breaks through the course of the school day for all of our students. You can also see the use of the projector and a teacher teaching the students. You can see social distancing taking place within the classroom. As well as then in the last picture, the use of the plexiglass dividers when we need to do some other instruction with students in different rooms within a classroom. So I wanted just to share some of those pictures. I'd like to provide an update with regard to inclusive practices. If you recall, last year, we did perform the service delivery review with Dr. Julie Costin. And we also did the scheduling review at middle school with Elliot Maron Bloom. And some of those results from both of those, those events, really resulted in some updates and recommendations around inclusive practices. So we're doing, spending time with our teachers on co-teaching, working on how we utilize our staff within the inclusive classroom, as well as universal design for learning with all of our teachers. If you can advance the slide, please. And so during the 1920 school year, it was really a great deal of theory where we did the service delivery reviews, the scheduling study. We began to engage with more training around universal design for learning. And then, of course, we had the pandemic. So some of those professional development opportunities were interrupted. And we anticipate re-initiating those with the IU this year with regards to universal design for learning. But we've also continued some of that work through the summer in the trains that we've offered to our staff. And then this year, a lot of those recommended practices have been put into play. We've increased some of our special ed staffing. We've taken a close look at our assignments. We offered summer, summer professional development to support our teachers. We identified co-teaching partnerships earlier so that the staff were able to engage with one another collaboratively in the summer. And I'm pleased to report that many of our teachers are finding time for that co-planning. They're working collaboratively. And despite the uniqueness of the return to our school year in that virtual environment as well as onsite, our teachers are really doing a very nice job getting co-teaching up and going this school year despite the circumstances that we're under. So we will continue to work on inclusive practices. But I wanted to provide a brief update to, to the board and to the community at large. The next big undertaking that's coming upon us this year, as you know, we've adopted a new platform, the Student Information System with Synergy. We have not yet rolled out the Special Education Module. That component will be coming later in the spring of this year. And again, this is the, the sort of the, the model that was used with the release for the Student Information System of the Plan, Build, Test, Deploy, and then Support. And what we've outlined here for the Special Ed Module is really that timeframe that we are looking at for this school year. So beginning in October through about February, we'll be planning it, working closely with a synergy team to talk about what that needs to look like. We will have staff that we are training to turn around and do the rest of the staff training through the course of the year. And then we're looking to release the Special Ed Module live in the spring so that we can begin to utilize it as we move through that last quarter of this school year. And of course, Synergy will provide ongoing support to the district as we move through this process. So again, I wanted to make the board aware that this is coming as we move through this school year. Back to you, Mrs. Smith.
Unmuting would help. Thank you, Dr. Boyd. We have heard many questions in a curriculum instruction about how do we do science labs in particular in a virtual environment and still provide a level of hands-on experiences for our students? And so tonight, we wanted to just briefly share with you something called Gizmo from eLearning. And this was actually something that we had started to investigate before the pandemic hit in March. And we're considering doing a resource review and pilot with our secondary science teachers. So in the audience this evening, in case we have some follow-up questions, we have Mrs. Stephanie Baker, our curriculum supervisor for the STEM areas, as well as Mrs. Amy Brecht is here as our secondary science department chair at the high school. Certainly, they can answer questions later. But the next slide really shows you that as part of the agenda this evening, you will see a grant listed there. And thanks to Mrs. Baker for working with this company to apply for us to receive the grant. We are able to have a free pilot of this particular resource called the Science Success Grant. It's valued at slightly over $12,000. And really, it is simulations of different science experiments. It also has math components as well. It is a pilot for the entire year and it is open to our teachers in grades six through 12. Mrs. Baker scheduled, we had one in-service training opportunity last week. We have another one coming up. And there, I believe, are one or two more that are required as part of the grant as well. But there is a short video here that we will play to give you an idea of what this program has the power to do for us. And then certainly, we can entertain any questions you may have.
Mr. Ganesh, do I have to adjust the speakers at all? Or should this be fine?
You can unmute yourselves and play that video, Dr. Russell, please.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear it?
Very quiet.
How's that? Can you hear it? Okay.
Simulations take events that could happen over days, weeks, months, sometimes even years, and bring it into a few minutes.
If we did labs for two weeks straight, we would barely be able to cover everything that's in that gizmo.
So as I click play here, what's going on in this image?
I am really a strong proponent of Gizmo, both for math as well as for science because I have seen firsthand what it does in terms of problem solving and critical thinking.
The more trials you do, the more it looks like it's theoretical.
When we had them do the Gizmo, we were able to see their conversation change from how do I do this to what's the relationship and this change drives this change.
I think the workers are around in this general area.
They were able to really look at the connections that they were seeing within the Gizmo.
There's a conversation that's happening. So there's communication skills that are being further enhanced in mathematics and science and languages.
Need to be able to absorb as many calories as possible.
So you can go the long series of times.
One of the great things about Gizmo is they're modular. They work really well with just about any curriculum. So all 400-plus Gizmos are correlated to the latest A standards and hundreds of textbooks.
90% of our standards are covered with Gizmos. So it makes those concepts very easy for our teachers so they can apply those when they are teaching those particular standards.
So if you need a chemistry Gizmo on matter, then you can go in and you can search it easily by that performance expectation. You can search it by topic, by grade level, and there it is.
And using Gizmos, they master more of the standards more quickly than they do without. I guarantee that.
Do you know the exploration guys that go along with the Gizmo? Ask the kinds of questions that make the students think.
Teachers don't have to spend inordinate amounts of time trying to figure out how to use these tools.
Gizmos have made it a whole lot easier to plan out a lesson and get to a certain standard. We say here that it is slow and right around here, it got real fast. Why do you think that's happening?
Explore Learning's professional development department partners with districts to identify their needs and then create a program to move them toward their goals.
Explore Learning has been a thought partner as we've moved to more inquiry-based, student-centered classroom strategies.
The services we've received from Explore Learning have just been outstanding. It's been very seamless.
When students are more engaged in science or math, and when students are more engaged using the Gizmo product, their scores are higher. So although we can't say it's causation, we do know that there is a correlation.
Now we see children really looking at the concept at a much deeper level, which is what we want.
And I, I won't go back to teaching it the other way ever because it's, it's just, it's night and day.
And I, I won't go back to teaching it the other way ever, because it's, it's just, it's night and day.
So obviously, this is a really powerful instructional tool. And the video was, of course, created before COVID. And so, you know, there were certainly students close together and working and having those conversations. But we can use this.
I see Mrs. Maris has her hand up. Did you have a question? Or do I? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay. I was just saying, we can certainly use this tool in our current, you know, instruction that, and we can have those opportunities for collaboration in a digital environment. But they can still really experience the, you know, the labs and so forth, probably to a higher degree than even sometimes with manipulatives in the classroom. But I will defer if Mrs. Brecht, if there's anything, you know, quickly that you would like to add, since I think you've been using it probably the most.
Can everybody hear me okay? I guess I could turn my. So I've basically been trying to use this whenever I would normally do a lab in class so that the students can still have the opportunity to manipulate variables and try to make predictions and also look at data and create conclusions based on the experiment. And one of the things I like about the Gizmos is that activities, they said it in the video, but activities that would normally take long periods of time, several days to up to a week, or even activities that I couldn't do in a classroom because, you know, it would take a year to collect that data, you're still able to observe what would happen over time, you know, for, in an evolution type of scenario or in a genetics scenario. So it does allow us to still create lab activities where students can manipulate variables like they would in class. It also provides teachers with, the Explore Learning website provides teachers with like student guides or exploration guides that we can modify to make more challenging or we can differentiate to, you know, meet the needs of all of our learners. I teach AP classes and college prep classes and co-taught classes. And I've used them in all of those three levels successfully to have students, you know, a little bit more inquiry-driven in the AP class and then a little bit more guided in the college prep class. And then even more so guided in my co-taught classes so that all of my students can still participate and feel successful at the completion of the lab. So I really do feel like it's a beneficial resource, and it's allowing us to continue lab activities, even though we're in a virtual scenario or even when we go back to a hybrid situation, because we can still use those for our students that are at home and our students that are in class. I can answer any questions also, if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Brecht. I'll just comment and say that this is a pilot for this year. We will, you know, utilize a rubric to assess it and then determine if it's something that we would be bringing forth to the board next, you know, at the end of this year for a purchase for next year possibly. But we are happy to entertain any questions about this or anything from the presentation. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Mrs. Brecht and Mrs. Baker for joining us.
All right, so Mrs. Maris, did you have a question?
I have a question and a comment. Okay. I just wanted to comment and say thank you to Dr. Boyd and the district working on inclusion because I have a student who's experiencing co-teaching in, actually, Mrs. Brecht's classroom. And the co-teaching that's being put forth is phenomenal. And also, my student is able to use Gizmos. And it gives my student much more readily, it makes the curriculum more accessible. It's just a really amazing program, and I like using it myself. But my question is to Dr. Boyd, could she explain in Synergy, what exactly is the special ed component that's coming in the spring? I'm not understanding what is going to be added on to Synergy for special education students.
Sure. So the special, right now, we use a program called IEP Plus to generate all of our our special education documents, the NOREPs, the actual IEPs themselves, evaluation reports, reevaluation reports, all of those things. So with Synergy, the special ed component is really where and how we will be able to generate and store all of the special education documentation that we're required, you know, to do with our paperwork, as well as this is where the information will be housed for the state reporting all of our information with regards to special education data that is pulled and provided to the state for our December one count. That's December first is the, the date that the state uses for all of their gathering of special education data. So that data has to be stored and pulled somewhere for this. So this is where it will ultimately be housed and will be in the process of converting everything, moving it from IEP Plus into Synergy so that really all of our, I guess, all of our student information system will be stored in one platform.
Thank you.
Okay, to move on, are there other questions?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Boyd and Mrs. Smith. Moving on to item 4.03, the recommended action will be a motion to approve, I'm going to say this incorrectly, Komajo School of Japan rescheduling this year's exchange visit to the Perkyum Valley High School from March 2021 to March 2022. The rescheduling is due to the occurrence of the coronavirus. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, can we put this one on consent? Okay, moving on to item 4.04, the recommended action will be a motion to approve the Japan Exchange Program for 2022 as listed. So this is approximately 11 students traveling to Japan in mid-June 2020, 2022 through mid-July 2022. Any comments or questions? Okay, can we also move that one to consent? Item 4.05, the recommended action will be a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow a non-resident senior who has met the requirements of Policy 202 to conclude the 2020, 2021 school year at Perkyum and Valley High School. Any comments or questions? Okay, we can move that one to consent as well. Item 4.06, the recommended action will be a motion to approve the Faze School Reopening Health and Safety Plan, version eight, for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented. Do you have a presentation for us this week or is that coming next week?
I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Kohler, we did have the documents, they don't appear to be attached. We have a summary document of all the changes and the actual document itself. We'll make sure that they get uploaded into Board Docs. They, I think they were shared in the weekly communication, but they are not here. So we'll add those, I apologize for that. Dr. Kohler, I wondered, though, Mrs. Lewis presented a new piece of information to me today. And I wonder if she could share it with the group very briefly. It may be another revision we would like to propose as part of version eight.
Hi, yes, good evening, everyone. It's in regard, I was speaking with Sierra Gomez at the Health Department, just going over some of, you know, the questions and ongoing plan that we have. And one of the things I asked was securing return-to-work notes for staff members who may be out for either isolation or quarantine purposes or awaiting testing. And that must be done, it must be requested by the individual from their contact tracer. So I wasn't sure if Mr. Moran or Mr. Alabak wanted to weigh in on that or if that was something that we needed to add to our health and safety plan.
I don't know if Mr. Alabak or Mr. Moran would like to weigh in on that. But this is something that Mrs. Lewis and I spoke about briefly today and wanted to make sure if it needs to be included or should be included that we do that.
And also to make sure that our staff is certainly well aware of, you know, what needs to be done in a timely manner. They can ask, you know, while they have the, the contact tracers, you know, on the phone and at their disposal.
I can review that information with Mr. Alabak and see if that's something that needs to be added to the plan.
I certainly appreciate that, Mr. Moran. And while your face is on the screen, I will formally introduce you to the public. This is Mr. Ryan Moran. He is transitioning into the Executive Director of Human Resources. He will be assuming leadership of the Human Resources Department as Mr. Alabak prepares to transition out towards retirement. So welcome, Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Dr. Russell, and it is a pleasure to join the Perkyum Valley team. Thank you to all the board members for your support as well.
Welcome, we're delighted to have you here.
So if it's all right, Dr. Kohler, I'll work with Mrs. Lewis. We'll add that language and we'll propose it to you and make sure that we shift these documents to be present in the public then for all to review. Thank you.
Okay, so go ahead, Mrs. Evans-Brock.
Thank you. I had spent some time reading through it today. It is on my Board Docs attached. So I had spent some time reviewing it today and just had a few questions. Not necessarily anything necessarily about things that have been changed, but just some things as, as the school year has started with kids in person. I had asked at the last board meeting in terms of cleaning in-between classes at the secondary level. And at that point, you had said there was some talk about having students do that. So I was wondering if you had an update on how that is occurring.
Right now, the approach we're taking is offering students the opportunity to pick up a wipe in a classroom and wipe their desktop. We, we are not cleaning in-between those secondary classes. And right now, that's the approach we're taking.
Okay, because it does address that on page 10 in our Health and Safety Plan. So that might be something that we need to look at. And then on page 17, it talks about table surfaces cleaned at the conclusion of breakfast and lunch. Is that at the conclusion of each lunch period or just at the conclusion of the entirety of lunch?
It's actually happening at the conclusion of each lunch period at the secondary level. So maybe we need to clarify that a little bit better. Yeah, we can do that too. Thank you.
And then page 27, it talks about no communal or shared school supplies. And it talks about library books staying off the shelves for two days for UV cleaning. I was curious how that's working for classroom books. Like I know, having worked, having volunteered in the elementary schools, that teachers use like guided reading books or they have their classroom library set of books. So how are, are those being handled so that the same, that students aren't sharing those and that there's time to clean those in between?
You know, I'll have to get back to you on that one. I'm not exactly sure if they're using wipes alone or providing students a book that they use consistently and do not share. So I can clarify that. They're not using the UV wands in the classrooms right now. So I'll, I can follow up with you and then we'll make sure that the verbiage necessary is in the plan as part of this, this proposal.
Perfect.
You said 27, Mrs. Evans-Brock, was that page 27?
Yeah. Okay, great. And then I know we've talked about lockers not being used and that, that students aren't changing for gym at this point. But it's been brought to my intention that at the high school level, we are going to be doing swimming. And especially now with, with Dr. Hollis's point of the ventilation in the pool. I'm concerned as to how that works with our Health and Safety Plan.
So I'll have to get back to you on that one too. So I will share that in this week's communication and we'll make sure what needs to be reflected in this proposed version is there. I appreciate you bringing that one up, thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was very surprised to, to hear that. And then I'm not sure how that works for kids that are virtual on those days. So, and then just finally, you know, I mentioned earlier about when we have subs or we're hiring new staff at the last minute, how we're communicating this Health and Safety Plan to those staff so that we're making sure it's being upheld.
So I don't know whether that was rhetorical or not, but I will share with you because I was aware of the picture of a teacher that was brought in at the last minute, however, was not wearing a mask in class last week or day. This was brought to our attention and we immediately, as soon as we learned of it, we responded. Everybody's wearing a mask in school all day or a face shield if there's a reason why they're not wearing a mask. And we are also, at the same time as we are developing protocols for staff to be made aware of these expectations, substitutes to be made aware, developing sub-protocols. So it's sort of an aside, a connected conversation. But there have also been questions about substitutes, day-to-day subs. So again, we're working to inform anybody who comes into our building, anyone who is not a PVSD, a regular PVSD employee of what's expected and to sort of understand the guidelines we are currently upholding as a district. So working to improve that communication for subs in response. So maybe we'll reflect some of that as well in here. Happy to do that. Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to read through it so carefully. Thank you. It's not necessarily the most engaging read. So it's very helpful when someone does take the time to go through it. So thanks.
Are there any other comments or questions on this item? So seeing that we have some outstanding questions, we'll leave 4.06 off of the consent agenda. Moving on to item 4.07, the recommended action will be a motion to approve Addendum II to the 2020, 2021 Student Handbook. These are based on updates to Policy 103 and Policy 220. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Not seeing any, are we okay moving this one to consent? Okay. Item 4.08 is the October Enrollment Report, which will be presented at the next meeting. So that concludes my section.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Kohler. We're move on now to section five on business, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Dorr.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. 5.01, comments on business. Comments from the audience are accepted on any business item. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Moving on to 5.02, be a finance update for Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Good evening, everybody. So we have a couple of topics that we'll move forward with our finance update for tonight. The first will be parking and activity fees. We'll move into a quick update on the ESCO and Athletic Field Improvement Updates so that the whole board can see what the previous Safety and Operations Committee has seen as well. We'll talk a little bit about the now-published Act One Index for Perkyum and Valley School District and what that means for us as we prepare for the 2021, 2022 General Fund Budget. We'll have a quick update on the COVID-19 grants and the, in the expenditures from a, a 30,000-foot view. And then we've had two other topics that we kind of put under other because it was subsequent to us moving forward with the publish, publishing of the presentation, the Elevon, which is a third-party payment processing software for student activity fees, and the High School Auditorium, a quick update to bring the, the board up to, up to perspective and par as far as where we're at with those items and to start that conversation again. So if we move forward to parking fees. So just in general, just so that So just in general, just so the board knows, parking fees for our budget for 2020 and 2021, this is impacted by COVID, has been about, what we put in the budget was $35,000. Up for discussion tonight, we have not collected and recognized and made any deposits for any checks that have been received yet for the parking fees. And the reason is that as we move forward with our scaffold approach to bringing everybody back, we quickly realized that we would have thirds of students coming in. And so the parking spots and the fees associated with that would mean that we would probably have many more students coming in to park their cars as opposed to taking transportation while we're under the COVID situation. So for discussion tonight, just in general, what do we want to do with parking fees just for this year? Again, we've budgeted $35,000. We have not recognized any revenues at this particular point in time. I've provided for discussion purposes, the previous four or five fiscal years. Remember, the 1920 year is unaudited at this point in time. And remember, that is the impact of COVID on our parking fees from the $53,000 the year before to the $28,000. And remember, as we go through this process, that we are just trying to make this a little bit easier for everybody moving forward. But it is a $35,000 budgetary item that has been placed into our budget. And so the thought process has been that as a board and as administration, we would have a discussion about removing those fees for this, just this particular year. Any thoughts or comments on that? This is not a recommendation. This is just a discussion.
So I have, I see hands first from Mrs. White and then this Dr. Kohler and then Mr. Door. So Mrs. White.
So the question that I have in about the fees, in addition to, so you pay the fee, you get a pass, correct?
Correct.
So I think that to the point of the fact that there would theoretically maybe be more drivers than normal. How would we, if we eliminated the parking fees, regulate the amount of students? I mean, there's only so many spots, right? So so I guess we would just issue parking passes by registration? Is that what your thought would be as well? And then, so that's the first part. The second part is, has it been discussed to maybe make it a voluntary donation sort of parking fee? And I realize that sounds strange because, you know, why would you pay for it if you didn't have to? But I think that there are definitely avenues in society that people give because they understand that that was money that was, you know, part of our expenditure budget. And so therefore, you know, although maybe some people would need to have the reprieves, they they wouldn't necessarily need to take advantage of it if they didn't have to not pay it. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And and a couple of things. First of all, as far as registration, we've already talked to Dr. Moss. The exact same process that we've instituted in the past would still need to be followed. For liability purposes, insurance purposes, we still need to track where those cars are. They're still not going to be able to park anywhere that they want to. We still want the ability to track where they are parking for liability issues. So that particular process does not change. There is just no fee associated with it. As far as voluntary, that's a really good question and part of why we brought it up for discussion. And I appreciate those two questions.
Okay. Dr. Kohler and then Dr. Mr. Door and then and then Mrs. Mares.
So I had a comment first. I am in support of waiving the parking fee because I do think that as we're seeing a lot of parents are driving their students, their younger students opting them to not take the bus. And I think this would make that decision easier for some families if they didn't have to pay the parking fee. And then my question was sort of answered. I wondered the same thing in terms of, you know, right now you pay the fee and you get an assigned spot. So I assume students would still get assigned spots, like you said, so we could track them. But I was wondering, because the high school is on a hybrid schedule, if there's some spot sharing that could happen so that more people could have spaces if that's even an issue?
Absolutely. The intention is, is once we set our goal with the thirds, bringing that, bringing the high school students in in thirds, we then set about making sure that we could do that. And so spot 17, for instance, can be used by three different individuals on their days when they are in.
So just to piggyback on that, though, if we do, you know, fingers crossed, get to a point where we're not necessarily having to follow a hybrid schedule, then what?
That's a really good question. We haven't gotten there yet. And the hope is, as you pointed out, Dr. Kohler, that we would certainly get there. So we would have to do a pivot and we would have to figure out how to go about making that correct.
So if I may, I will offer that Dr. Moss has thought about that and would go back to the order in which those registrations were submitted. And so she would follow it in a very systematic way. And we would exhaust all of the spots we have available. We have quite a few up at East that we don't always use all of. But she would go back to those that first submitted the applications and submitted their checks and then work her way through the pile from there. So some students would most likely, depending on the number that subscribe, not be able to drive the entire year. That's a that's a possibility with the way we're currently thinking right now, in the event we exhaust all spots, so.
Good questions.
Mr. Door?
So, Mr. Weaver, what is administration's recommendation and why?
Well, so from a from an administration recommendation, we put it up here for a board discussion. Obviously, this would impact our revenues. We've budgeted for $35,000. So from my business administration hat, I would say that that would not be my recommendation. However, recognizing as we've pointed out that this, these are unique times. And hopefully, we'll never see another year like this. And I'll leave it at that. But this would go a long way to helping those people and individuals that might need a little bit of help, especially since, you know, transportation issues, those types of things. Just for this particular year, it would be my recommendation to follow along and actually remove the parking fee for just this year.
Okay, thank you. I'd support that.
I also wanted to share that while Dr. Moss is not on the line, she is in support of this recommendation to waive the fees this year. We were also uncertain how long we would be driving to school and coming to school. So there is that fairness piece, just not knowing how long students would be using a parking space. And as Mr. Weaver has mentioned, it's really, it's it's a very unique year. So if the board could be comfortable and we want to encourage drivers this year because it's fewer than students on the buses, which is healthier for us and our students, that would be great. So Dr. Moss, while she's not here, is also in favor of that.
And I think the other answer to that is the telltale sign is we have not made any deposits of the checks that we have received so far. So I think the anticipation was that we would not deposit them.
Okay, Mrs. Mares.
I guess I'm wondering why we wouldn't charge $5 or $10 just to give the district a little bit of cushion? Because yes, these are unique times. I don't know. Has there been any discussion of that? I would think that anything would be helpful since we budgeted $35,000. So to take in a zero, if I'm a student driver and I'm paying $5 or $10 as opposed to what the normal fee is, to me, that doesn't seem, it seems doable. But I'm wondering if you have discussed a reduced fee?
We have not. That's an excellent point, but we have not.
So if I can piggyback on that, you know, I guess the question around that then also becomes, let's say we go back full time in January and then you've paid a fee, but you know, I like the idea. It makes sense if we're dividing in thirds. And then, but that's where I think, yeah, the whole question mark of hopefully, when we do get back full time, where does that leave us? And, you know, what the questions are around that?
Well, and maybe if you go back, then you prorate it. You know, you take the full fee, prorate it, you've already paid your $5 or $10. You extract that and that's what you need to pay. And if that's not something you want to do, then you go to the next person. I don't know.
I just, I wonder if the $5 or $10 is worth the administrative work that that would produce.
Mr. Weaver, what do you think? What is the, with $5 or $10? Or I guess that's for Dr. Moss, who who has to process that?
Yeah, so I would say there's about 400 parking spaces that we typically rent out. So at $5, that's going to be about $2,000 bucks. And so for $10, it would be, you know, $8,000. Or, I'm sorry, $4,000.
Wouldn't there be administrative fees regardless? Since they're still having to catalog all of the registered spots?
Yes. That's correct.
So, yeah, you know, it'd be interesting to hear what Dr. Moss says. But yeah, I think that we definitely would want to pull back from the 100. That's what I'm hearing.
I guess. I'm sorry, what I'm thinking of, Jim, is, and I just think about it in relation to my own work. I'm just picturing, you know, on the surface, it makes sense, collect $5 or $10 per car. But then I'm thinking on the accounting end of then in my own workplace, having to turn around and tell the accountant, now you have to spend all these labor hours figuring out who paid what. And, you know, it's a second accounting transaction. And I don't know what system you use, but it, I can imagine. I know for for my workplace, that becomes quite an adventure for the accountant. And is that the best amount of time spent for, you know, you and Amy and anybody else involved in the process for just that small financial gain? And I'm asking because I don't know.
Right. And I think the other thing is, is that $5 to $10 could be handled in cash. And so there's an exchange of cash, whereas if it's $100, typically they're checks, if not always checks. And so there is a little bit, you know, there's concern about money going around, handing, you know, people touching that kind of stuff. I mean, as we get into this conversation, you know, there are some other things to think about. And that would be one of them. Yes.
Mrs. Mares, your hand is up, is it up again or still? I just wasn't sure. So it sounds, so I think just following on to that point again, I think it makes sense to just go back and hear what Dr. Moss thinks.
Okay. Can follow up in the Thursday letter then on that one. Okay, so moving forward, a similar discussion for the activity fees. Now, we have been collecting activity fees because we have started with our activities. So the question is mostly around, and again, same setup. You can see the budgetary history there. But you can see it's a much larger nugget of our revenue sources for us to seriously consider. And it has been lowered again by the expected impacts of COVID. We took it from about 135,000 down to 100,000 for budget, budgetary reasons. But same conversation, however, what, when we look at this, we seem to be okay with the activity fee being applied to the secondary activities. However, serious concern and discussion should occur in regards to the middle school activities because of the situation where they are at. The secondary activities at the high school are moving along. We know that the PAC is moving along, sports are happening, activities are happening, band is happening. Maybe not so much at the middle school level, or it's been significantly delayed in its approach and use. So the conversation is turned more towards middle school, sports and activities. Do we want to consider reducing them and/or eliminating those fees just for the middle schools?
Well, you know, I think the problem with that and just looking at the activity fees in general is there has always been a very large discrepancy between what some students are getting for their $100 versus what other students are getting for their $100. So for example, one student can pay $100 and participate in one after-school club that meets six times a year. And another student could pay $100 and be in three sports and traveling, you know, all around and be in something, engaged in something every single day after school. So, you know, I'll just say, I have personally and philosophically never been a fan of the activity fee. I mean, we call this co-curricular. We believe that it is a essential part of the student experience to be engaged in outside activities. And especially now, when for many students, the opportunity to be engaged in some sort of co-curricular is their opportunity to engage with students outside of their homes because they are still in a virtual environment or they're in a virtual environment so much. I think it's really important for students to have that opportunity and outlet. And I wouldn't want the cost associated with that to become a barrier. So I would be comfortable with not having the fees this year. I think we were up $5 million last year in our budget. So I think, you know, and I know that we're saving money in some places and spending more money in other places this year. But, you know, I mean, maybe we can, even after we hear, I mean, we don't hear, see the quote equal sign until, what is it, November? Jim, is that when we see the first?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, so that's kind of where it's a little bit of a challenge because, you know, based on what we saw from our budget from last year, it sounds to me like we have the money. I am, you know, the only question to me would be, gosh, if we're really in a bad spot looking at next year, we might need to think about it. But, you know, I think that the activity fees are problematic on a lot of different levels. So I would have no problem with waiving it this year or reducing it or reducing it to a, you know, maybe a $25 per activity type of something or something different from what we have this year. Again, the discrepancy for, between what you pay and what you get amongst students has always been a challenge for me. All right, so I'm just, I've got Mrs. Evans, Rocket, Mr. Door, Mrs. White and Dr. Kohler. So Mrs. Evans, Rocket?
Thank you. I just had a question in terms of what we did with activity fees last year with things ending in March. So anyone that had paid an activity fee for sports that didn't happen, were those monies returned or how did we handle that?
Yeah, Jim. Yes, they were refunded. And also, we already started collecting for high school fall sports. So if we decide now to waive it, we'd have to issue refunds, I would imagine, to everyone who's already paid.
And to Mrs. Lofton?
Yeah, last year, we issued, we did refund last year. And so we didn't assign any to middle school yet, but high school have started paying for the fall sports.
Okay, and then Mrs. Lofton's point with the discrepancy among those fees, like was there any, you know, for instance, a club that was scheduled to meet six times during the year and only met twice? Did those get refunded? Or, you know, I'll say, I paid for my child to do game club and that met half of the times it was supposed to meet because of the, and I have a $100 charge on my synergy that I haven't paid.
So no, the only ones were, if the So no, the only ones were, if the sport was canceled altogether, I think spring sports ended up getting canceled. So those were refunded. But if this club did start at the beginning of the year, I don't believe those, those were refunded.
Okay, Mr. Door.
Mr. Weaver, are you suggesting we waive just middle school activity or all activity fees?
I mean, at this point in time, for conversation purposes, we were thinking about just looking at just the middle school fees to be waived because they've been so delayed for, from their start. The, the high school has been delayed, but the middle schools, you know, they just got started. So yes, that's what we were thinking about just from a discussion purpose. Again, if I want to, if I come forward with a recommendation, I'll say it's a recommendation. This is just a discussion, discussion point for us moving forward and we feel it's a way that we can help. And so that's kind of why we brought it up.
So what part of that hundred thousand dollars is, is middle school?
Yeah, I'll have to look on that and break that down a little bit better.
Thank you.
So, and if, I know there are other hands up, but if I can just piggyback on that question, are you saying you're only going to waive fall sport activity fees for middle school? Or all middle school activity fees?
So right now, the conversation has been that we would waive the middle school activity fees for the year.
So I'm not sure how that aligns with saying that we need to waive the fees because we're delayed in starting.
Well, I think the likelihood of middle school sports, for instance, the likelihood of those going on in the wintertime. I have been conversing with Mr. Glansky is not too high. Now, keep in mind, I am not the PAC and I'm certainly not the governor. So we're just trying to react to what we are hearing. Because of the mandates for the indoor that we had talked about previously in this meeting.
Or is the reason why we would not have middle school sports because of the nature of the sports, like for example, basketball being indoors? Some wrestling being indoors with a lot of close contact? Is it just because of the nature of the sports? And if that's the case, why would we have it at the high school, but not at the middle school?
And again, in my understanding for Mr. Glansky, there's more of a push for the high school athletics than there is for the middle school athletics.
But we're still allowing the community basketball, like the PVYB and all of those.
We, we've told them right now that they have to wait. We have not made a decision.
Oh, okay. I've received communications suggesting otherwise. All right. Well, that's a whole other issue. All right. I'm gonna pass it on to Mrs. White next.
So again, and, and I just feel like to be diplomatic with regards to the amount of revenue that would be lost. And because of the sensitive nature of the budget due to COVID for the district, I feel like the activity fee thing, I, I have the same opinion as the parking thing and, and really the idea of a voluntary contribution. I, I just feel like it would maybe be well received. And I just feel like there are enough of generous population in our community to help move some of that money along. And with regards to the cash flow and the check business, I, I think that's as simple as either setting up an electronic payment, just like the home and schools have done, or, or just saying checks only. I, I think that's a simple thing to remedy. But I, I know that there are a lot of institutions that are moving to this voluntary donation format. I'm, I'm a part of some myself and I just feel as though if you can give, I feel like people tend to give. And so I don't think that we should just accept zeros for these, for these two budget line items. I, I just feel like putting the, putting the sentiment out there that we are looking to partner with our community at large and be completely transparent that the revenue for both parking and student activity fees equal, I, I mean, close to $200,000 or a hundred and, you know, $150,000. It's just so substantial that in order for us to continue to do and make choices based, you know, for other things, these, these monies that come in are all attributed with things that we pay for in the district and provide for the district. So I, I just feel like accepting zeros is not really a solid recommendation. And I don't think that that's a prudent recommendation, but I, I think that in a compromised fashion, we can put out a suggested donation or we can put out, you know, kind of like a donation of the heart, you know, is what I've heard it be called. I, I think that would just be a more responsible way to, to address the need that we need to have an accommodation, but we also do expect and rely on this money in terms of a budget.
I believe Dr. Color is next and then Dr. Weston.
Thank you. Most of my comments were actually kind of already made. I wanted to just kind of echo what Mrs. Lofton was saying. I mean, I've had concerns about this activity fee pre-COVID, partly because of the inequities like you have mentioned, and also because I think especially right now, we're trying to encourage students to get out there and do things if they're not in school. And I think activities are becoming a little bit of a burden because, you know, I, I have athletes and having to drive them to practice rather than they're at school and they're there. And it's, it's really inconveniencing a lot of people on many levels. And maybe this would be one way to reduce that a little bit. And also because of the uncertainty, yes, sports are happening and things are going well. Thank goodness so far. But I just feel like, again, this is such an odd year. And if we can do something to make it a little bit easier for people, I'm okay with that. In the grand scheme of things, a hundred thousand dollars isn't that much considering our overall budget. So I would be okay with considering it for both middle school and high school.
Okay, Dr. Weston.
Yeah, I, I, I think I have to kind of go along with, with what Dr. Cole I just said and what, what you said earlier as well, Mrs. Lofton. I see the activity fee as something a little bit different than the, than the parking fee. I mean, parking in the past, I see as kind of a, kind of a privilege. This year it's, it's much less of a privilege and it's something that we are really asking students and families to do to, to, to take some of the, the transportation burden off of ourselves. We really need the, we, 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 we need for them to do that. And so to charge them for that seems a little inequitable to me. The activity fees, I'm very much aligned with what Mrs. Lofton said. I, I would rather not have activity fees at all. But they do provide a fairly large amount of money, amount of revenue for the district. They help to support the activities. And if it's a choice between having an activity fee and not having activities, then, then I think, I think I have to choose the lesser of two evils with, with having a fee. But I think we need to rethink how the fee is assessed and, and kind of the philosophy of the activity fees rather than a, than a flat fee. Maybe if there, if there's a way that we could do it, you know, by activity or, or look at the different activities and see how much, you know, what, what you're getting for your fee. I, I think that needs to be, to be rethought. So I think this hopefully is the start of a dialogue that'll get us toward, toward a more equitable application of the activity fee. If we have to have it, it needs to be, you know, done fairly and, you know, that, 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 that's more fair to all students and families.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. I have a comment that Mrs. White, I see your hands up. Is it up again or still? Okay, thank you. So the other thing that just came to mind is to me as we're having this discussion is that, you know, whatever was five, seven, eight years ago, when these fees were first implemented, some of the other fees that I believe were also historically paid by the district, but then were transferred to become family responsibilities were some of the testing fees. And in, I'm thinking in particular the AP tests as well as the PSAT tests. And so what I think for the AP tests, those are what 90 some dollars per student? And if you get a free or reduced lunch, then you qualify for a reduced fee, which I think is still around 30 or $40 per AP test. So for a student who's taking a couple APs, that could be hundreds of dollars. I believe what the PSAT is $25. So that's not as much of a burden. But, you know, I'm, I'm wondering whether, I mean, I almost would rather waive our academic fees than our, I'd be interested to know what those fees are and how much, what a revenue is around that. And make sure that we're supporting our students academically as a goal as well.
Mrs. Lofton, that's about a hundred thousand dollars, the AP test fees, but they do get college credits, I guess, for scoring well on that test. So I guess the idea is you're paying for the credit, the $95 fee.
And so I guess my question around that, you know, I'm, I'm curious how our students performed this past spring compared to previous years because if our instruction is less, I have questions around the value of the, well, maybe not the value of the instruction, but I have questions about delivering the AP instruction in a virtual format and whether the students will be as fully prepared for their tests in the spring as we would want them to be. So I don't think it's necessarily saying you're getting a college credit when you pay that fee. So, you know, that's just, just the question of, you know, what is our philosophy around what fees we think students and families should be responsible for? So that's why I bring it up. I mean, you're, you're getting something for every single one of the fees. And I guess, you know, it's just a question of, do we want to support everybody academically? Do we want to support the co-curricular? I do agree that the parking, you know, is a bit of a luxury. I mean, my, my thinking around that has always been if you can buy your child a car, then you can pay a parking fee. You know, but I'm, I'm wondering, I'm just thinking back to the idea that was brought up earlier of having it be like an optional payment, maybe if we are a little bit more flexible in our approach to families who are struggling to pay this year. I, I think in previous years, you had to be free or reduced lunch. And, you know, because people's situations are so dramatically different in many situations this year, maybe we just, just as we give out free meals to people who ask, maybe we continue to charge the fees, but if someone asks for help, help is available.
Okay. Well, and that's why they were brought forward tonight for discussion, both parking and activity fees. Because it is such a unique year. And I, I recognize as Mrs. Lofton pointed out that these fees were really, really instituted about 10, 11 years ago. It was a whole different budget cycle. Then there were different things going on. Monies were tight. And this was a way when, when costs were rising within our budget that we could have those particular students that utilize those particular fees and those facilities to be charged a fee to help offset those costs that taxpayers at the time that didn't have students in the school were coming out to say that our, their tax bills were too high. So the activity fees was generated as part of a process to help offset those fees and make them focused on those individual students that were utilizing them. That's all. And if it's time for us to revisit them in this particular year, then so be it. And that's why we brought them forward. So we'll, we'll gather this week and we'll get something out on the Thursday, Thursday memo, but we don't have to make a decision. Certainly by next Monday night, we don't have to do that, but we still have to have an ongoing dialogue so we can, we can figure this out together. Okay. So moving forward, a quick esco update. Here's a snapshot from Phil Maury's final project status notes. You can see that mostly everything is now completed with the exception of the kitchen equipment that is finalized. I know that they acid washed the floor over the weekend to make it look a little bit better. So that project is almost complete, going through final punch lists. And Dr. Russell, if you would advance one more slide, you can see some pictures there. Again, the safety and operations committee has seen these pictures. On the left is the newer equipment and the new floor. In the middle is where the window used to be. If you look in the cafeteria or the, the old cafeteria, to the left, there was a long window that went two stories up. That window has now been removed and replaced with a tray drop off. And then on the slide on the right is the exterior where the freezer and the refrigerator is now. So it looks much, much better with brand new equipment and the freezer and refrigerator, which was key to the whole process. If you move to the athletic turf project, just two quick pictures there. Obviously, mostly everybody has seen the one on the left and the one on the right. Today, Mr. Clemmer showed me a picture where the majority of the stone is now down. So they're getting ready to put the turf on the actual lower field, the baseball field next couple of weeks. Here's a quick timeline that Hugh Cazal presented to the safety and operations committee. Again, the important part is that cleanup preparation, closeout documents on the stadium should be almost done at this point in time. And the lower field, given another week, week and a half, the turf should be down. And we should be moving towards closeout documents toward the end of October. Moving on to the act one index, it's official now. The act one index base is 3.0. We did not receive an additional bump because of our aid, our market value aid ratio. So the 3.0 generates in its current environment, $2.23 million. Again, remember the, that the act one base simply just is our ceiling. Should we choose? And as we go through the process of whether we go through a resolution signing or not, I know Mrs. Lofton has had other conversations in regards to timing of the resolution for this year with so many unknowns. It's probably not a good idea for us to sign the resolution. But at least we know when we hit that equal sign in November or December, whenever the budget timeline has it, that we should be able to have at least a comparison tool moving forward. On the right-hand side of that slide is the entire act one index tracking that I've received from the government, which shows you how they come up with the act one index and what it's been over the past couple of years. Remember, this is just base information. This is not Perkeelman Valley information as well. A quick update on the COVID expenditures. And again, the safety and operations committee did see this. Total grant opportunities, a little over 1.1 million total spent actual cash out at this point in time that we're going to have provided and reimbursed via those grants, about $517,000. We do have total outstanding encumbrances of about 384, which brings the total costs to about $902,000. So we have opportunities for 1.1. We have outgoing expenditures in some fashion, either here backordered or waiting for an order of about $902,000. Again, just to keep the board, the full board up to date on where we're at. As you heard earlier about the Chromebooks, those types of things, those that are all encumbered at this point in time and/or encumbered through COVID or our regular general fund budget opportunities, technology budget. So moving forward, there is a third party payment processor. We talked about student activity fees. When we switched from the old SIS to the new SIS, when we switched from the student through Power School to Synergy, we lost our ability through front, frontline to utilize our, that current software that we had set up. So we had to go out and find another one. What we focused in on after the business What we focused in on after the business office did some good research, um, we focused in on a company called Elevon to provide the third-party payment processor. They just happened to work with Synergy. Um, there were three others that we looked at. This is the best deal for the school district and also the pay or the payers, which are the parents, um, associated with this. What this comes down to, and you'll see a board motion, uh, for review and approval this month. The processing fee is 3% to, uh, for credit cards, and that goes to the parent or guardian. Um, and if the parent or guardian pays with a debit card, the district pays a 1% plus point two five, uh, transaction fee. Additionally, the district has a monthly service fee of $22.99 plus $15 per month for compliance fee. That's the best deal that we can get, um, with the party providers that we looked at. And the recommendation would be to move forward with that. Dr. Russell, if you would advance, there is a chart in there which shows you the four different vendors, um, and some of the research behind those. Um, and certainly the Elevon is the cheapest involved, uh, for us moving forward. And it is on for tonight's agenda for review and for formal board approval next week. There is one other item I'd like to bring up, and that is a, a item that was brought up at the Safety and Operations Committee. We are looking at the high school auditorium. What I have done is I've taken snapshots and pictures from our master facility study done by AEM back in December 2018. And so we've plugged those numbers in there for auditorium seating and finishes. It was about $49,000 to replace the seats. In the high school stage lighting and sound systems with those dollars listed there, again, as estimates, we are working as a team amongst Mr. Ganesh, Mr. Clemmer, um, myself, uh, to move forward with, um, other alternatives and to see how viable those estimates are and what those estimates did include. As our history and experience has shown with the AEM master facility study, but is necessarily, what is in those reports isn't necessarily the products that we are interested in. It does give us a starting point. And so I just wanted to get that back out to the full school board, letting you know that we are looking at these items.
Mr. Weaver, can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
Um, the concern that I remember being brought up during safety and operations by the, the high school principal was that when they have all the students gathered in the competition gym in the morning when they're arriving, they, the audio system that's in the competition gym isn't necessarily sufficient to be able to speak to all the students who are in the gym. And so there was a request to upgrade the sound system for the competition gym. Um, and then we had also, I believe that had been something that we had discussed in safety and operations in previous years as well, but didn't make the final cut. But, um, knowing the needs that we have this year for, um, again, being able to speak to all the students who are gathering in the gym as they're coming in, in the morning, that was again, real raises a concern by us for step up. Um, and then we asked, you know, can you also find out if they are having some, because he was the only principal who was president of safety and operations, we also asked. Okay, can you hear me now? Excellent. Okay, Jim, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Fantastic. Okay, so.
Yes, I can hear you. Okay.
I'm not sure exactly where I cut out, but, you know, I know that the high school auditorium wound up being a piece of that conversation, but I think the bigger conversation was making sure that our building principals or whoever is greeting the students as they're gathering in our auditoriums or wherever they're coming into the, or the gyms or wherever they're coming in, in the morning, have a system that's sufficient to be able to communicate with all of the students. So did we invest, did you investigate that as well?
We have, we have our feelers out there, um, but we have nothing to report at this time. We do expect sometime this week we'll have an updated, uh, estimate for what it is that we, that we need to address in there as well.
Cause I think we have the high school auditorium can probably be part of the conversation for capital projects for the coming year. But it was my understanding to be again, at least the competition gym that sounded like that was a pressing concern.
Yes, I agree with that wholeheartedly. Yes.
Um, let's see. Dr. Weston, is your hand up from before or is it up? Okay, okay, thank you. Mrs. White.
So, so yeah, the Judy, um, just, I agree. The conversation that we had, the priority really is, I think, the, should be the, the competition gym and the sound system there. But I, I would like to understand how the, the stage sound system ties in and maybe in terms of material or vendor, um, with the competition gym. Aside, I mean, the seating and the finishes and all of that, taking that off the, the, um, dockets, you know, for, for right now and really just focusing on, on the technology of the sound systems. Because I think that in terms of areas, um, if those areas can be up and running, they can actually accommodate larger groups. And those are the two places that that can happen other than, you know, the cafeteria. So I, I just feel like it would be, um, wise to address the sound, um, accommodations and the technology accommodations in all of the, in the large venue areas. So, you know, cafeterias, um, that was something that we had talked about cafeterias, cafeteriums. Obviously the competition gym was what started the conversation and then the auditoriums as well.
Okay, I, I, I agree with that. Unfortunately, most of these items are more technology-based at this point in time. And I know, I do know Mr. Ganesh is stretched very, very thin, um, with that. So, uh, we just want to do due diligence and make sure that, um, our technology that we're going to put in place will work with the technology that we have. But yes, we do have feelers out there. I do know that, um, both Mr. Clemmer and Mr. Ganesh have reached out to various vendors to see if they can drum up some sort of estimates. Um, and so hopefully we can present them, uh, for instance, in the, in the Thursday memo if we do have them by then.
And then just as, as to, to, to that point, Jim, um, whatever vendor we, we procure this type of technology from, they should be able to offer us installation services. You know, either via Co-Stars, we had talked about something like, you know, like a Co-Stars contract procurement, or we could even take a look at like a US communities or something like that. A lot of times th- those materials can, can be in like an installed price. And I, I think that that would really be a smart way to approach it. Um, and then Mr. Ganesh can just be kind of partner to it. Um, and you know, him and his team can stay the course doing what they've been doing. And then we could have a, a subcontractor, um, you know, address the installation of, of any material that we would, would possibly approve.
Yes.
Agree with that?
Yeah, absolutely. KPN, Co-Stars, PEPM, US Communities, they're, they're, Tim's, they're all out there. That's correct. Okay, so, um, good conversation. I appreciate that. And, uh, we've got some work to do to make sure we get some stuff on the Thursday memo. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Okay, moving on to 5.03 grants and donations. We have, can you scroll up for me, Dr. Weston? There's only one. All right, there we go. There's, there's only one. Okay. We have a $12,000 grant from Science Success Grant for, from Explore Learning to Secondary Science. 5.04, there'll be a motion to approve a settlement agreement and release number 304959 in lieu of FAP as recommended by the solicitor. Any questions? Okay, can we move that to consent, please? 5.06, will be a motion to approve a settlement agreement and release numbers 304959 in lieu of FAP as recommended by the solicitor. Any questions?
I just.
Oh, we're on the same.
This motion, yeah, it looks like the numbers are.
Not matching.
Yeah, so just, I would just for next week, not, not a question about the settlement itself, but just let's make sure our numbers and our motions are aligned correctly.
We will address that. Thank you.
So this, so this one is number 403, 403015. Any questions? Okay, please move to consent. 5.06. Be a motion to approve a settlement and release 403467 in lieu of FAP as recommended by the solicitor. Any questions? Seeing none, can we move that to consent, please? 5.07, be a motion to ratify an agreement with Elevon to provide third-party credit card payment processing, a service that will be used by families to pay student fees through parent view in the new Synergy Student Information System implemented for the 2020, 2021 school year. Any questions? Seeing none, can we move that to consent, please? 5.08, be a motion to ratify special education contracts and cost of services for the 2020, 2021 school year to meet requirements of students' IEPs throughout of district placements and special services provided to students within our district programs. Any questions? Okay, can we please move that to consent? 5.09, be a motion to approve a proposal with applied video technology for board conferencing sound system upgrades as listed at a cost not to exceed $20,000. Any questions? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Thank you. Where is this money coming from? Is this budgeted?
Mr. Weaver, can you speak to that? Were we considering COVID grant funds?
Yes, we are considering COVID grant funds for this. Or a combination of COVID grant funds and existing technology budget monies.
And how much additional work does this create for a very stretched thin Mr. Ganesh?
So we're gonna be, we're gonna be contracting this work to AVT. So they're gonna be procuring the equipment and also installing this for us. So we just need to, uh, provide some oversight.
I, I just have concerns that we're really pushing these in-person meetings when it's taking a lot of Mr. Ganesh's time. He was pretty stressed out here earlier and I don't know that this is providing any, uh, better experience of a meeting than what we have, um, when we're all at home on our own Zoom. So I have concerns that we're using grant funds for this that could be used for something else educational based. And I have concerns that we're using so much of Mr. Ganesh's time when we have so many students that are learning virtually right now and are experiencing problems that could use our technology help.
If I can speak to that for a minute, um, I believe that we should be having in-person meetings if we are having in-person instruction. And I do believe that maybe, you know, next month, we, maybe we won't be able to have in-person meetings next month. Maybe we won't be able to have in-person meetings in December. But I believe as Dr. Russell shared, our current audio equipment is very old and will need to be a plate, replaced eventually anyways. And I'm hoping that within six months, we're going to be back to having full in-person meetings. We, we can hope. It, it maybe it'll be nine months. But even when that happens, I think continuing to broadcast the meetings over Zoom or in some sort of, you know, YouTube interactive platform where people can be participating from home really provides a benefit to our community. We have had much higher engagement in our, uh, board meetings, both the overall board meetings as well as our committees ever since we started going on to Zoom. And, you know, I don't think that that means that we want to stay on Zoom forever. I think that having us interact in person does have a better dynamic than having everyone be on their screens at home. And, you know, maybe, again, this might not be something that we need for next month, but in six months, I think we're going to need it. And if we have the opportunity to use grant funds to address a district need, then I think that there's value in that.
Okay, can we move that to consent? No? Okay, leave that off. And that ends my section.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Door. We'll move on to section six on payment of bills and I'll turn it over to Dr. Weston.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Item 6.01, comments on payment of bills. I'm looking on the participants list and I see no hands raised. So then we will move on to item 6.02, uh, the ratification of bills and payroll and authorization of payments. Uh, this will be, uh, presented, uh, for action next week at the October 12th meeting. Uh, and then item 6.03, the approval of the treasurer's reports and financial statements. This also will be, uh, presented for action at, uh, next week's meeting. And that concludes section six.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. Uh, section seven, professional personnel, Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Uh, item 701, are there any comments on professional personnel? I see no hands raised. Um, we have a number of items that are requesting action tonight. So 702, the recommended action is to accept the resignations and retirements as listed in ISO.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 703, the recommended action is to ratify or approve the leaves of absence as listed in ISO.
Second, Wade.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 704, the recommended action is to approve a memo of understanding with PVEA regarding the hiring of alternate temporary professional employee to teach kindergarten for the Virtual Voyage 2.0 program in ISO.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
You know, Mrs. Evans-Brockett, if I may, there was a question from our PVEA officers. If I could ask the board to consider holding action until next week, that would be helpful.
So since we've already motioned and seconded, do we need to table? Mr. Supers?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Hi, so I will table, I recommend that we table 704.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Every, so, uh, all in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is tabled.
Um, so Dr. Russell, does that affect moving on? 705 and then 706, so table those for next week as well?
So we just don't, don't make a motion, just ask questions? Is that?
Uh, you could just have them, you, you will not be making a motion because we're not taking action tonight, but you can still discuss them like you discuss any other, uh, work session item.
Okay, so 705 next week will be asked to ratify the creation of one full-time alternative Okay, so 705, next week will be asked to ratify the creation of one full-time alternate temporary professional employee position for the 2021 school year. Any questions? So we're leaving that off consent till next week. 706, next week will be asked to approve an alternative temporary professional employee. Are there any questions? Okay, so we'll discuss that next week. 707, the recommended action is to ratify or approve the provisional employment of the professional personnel as listed pending fulfillment of all statutory requirements and ISO move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 708, the recommended action is to ratify or approve the provisional employment of the long-term daily substitute as listed in ISO move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries.
709, the recommended action is to ratify the appointments of 2020 fall coaches as listed, including salary plus additional associated payroll and benefit costs pending completion of all necessary documentation and ISO move.
Second, Wade.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
710, the recommended action is to ratify the department chairs for the 2020 21 school year as listed, including salary plus additional associated benefit costs and ISO move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
711, the recommended action is to ratify the appointment of mentors for the 2020 21 school year as listed in ISO move.
Second, Wade.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries.
712 is on consent. 713. Next week will be asked to approve a memo of understanding with PVEA regarding contracted counseling services with creative health services. Seeing none, we can move that to consent. 714, next week will be asked to ratify the terms of the administrator retirement agreement as presented. Are there any questions? And we can move back to consent and that and section seven.
Section eight, support personnel, Mrs. Roberts.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Any questions or concerns or comment on support personnel? I don't see any. Um, 8.02, this is a request for action, the acceptance of retirements and resignations. The motion is to accept the retirements and resignations as listed and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
8.03 is requesting for action for this evening, approval of leaves of absent. The motion is to ratify the leaves of absence as listed and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries.
8.04, the requested action is motion to ratify or approve the provisional employment of the support personnel as listed pending fulfillment of all statutory requirements and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries.
8.05, the requested action is a motion to ratify the following part-time Title I and Project Silver Tutor appointments for the 2020 2021 school year at the hourly rate indicated no healthcare benefit. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
8.06 is on consent. 8.07 is also on consent. And 8.08 is an approval. The motion is to request to approve Mr. John McBride as a volunteer to serve on the technology team at no cost. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, I request we move that also to consent. And that completes section eight.
Thank you, Mrs. Roberts. We'll move on to section nine and I'll turn it over to Dr. Halas.
Thank you. Any comments are taken from the audience at this time? I'm not seeing any hands raised. So with that, we'll move to item 9.02, which is a first reading on policies. The following policies are presented for a first reading. And I guess I'll run through them. 103, discrimination Title IX. 104, discrimination Title IX. 111, lesson plans. 203, immunizations and communicable diseases. 209, health examinations and screenings. 247, hazing. 249, bullying and cyberbullying. 252, which is a new one on dating violence. 30 or 309.1 is a new one on telework. 3.4314 is physical examination. 317.1 is educator misconduct. 318 is attendance and tardiness. 331, job-related expenses. 332 is working periods. 334, sick leave. 340, responsibility for student welfare. 705, facilities and workplace safety. 803, school calendar. 824, maintaining professional adult and student boundaries. 904, public attendance at school events. And 907, school visitors. Comments, questions, discussion?
Actually, oh, good question. Go ahead. If I may, I just wanted to point out that in policy 103, there was a section for the committee to consider regarding consequences for some of the the offenses that are represented and described in the policy, the disciplinary consequences. We had not checked those spaces during the committee meeting. I would recommend checking all of them. And I wanted to bring that to the attention of the board and particularly the policy committee members. So none of these were checked, and we really should have talked about those in policy as possible consequences in response to violating this policy. So if there are no questions, we'll leave that in here for first reading. If you would like to talk about that, or if you have questions, feel free to raise them.
I have no concerns. I don't know if anyone else does.
Thank you.
If you could close, yeah, closing out of that, the question that I had actually was on 824, maintaining professional adult student boundaries. And if I recall, we were going to hold that policy and ask Mr. Moran to review it upon his, starting with school to make sure that that aligns with things that we believe are appropriate practices. Because there were, there was some language in there that I think was vague or could be misconstrued in ways that would prohibit what we would consider to be acceptable behavior. So I would ask that we take that one back to.
I was gonna say, it's also not listed there along with the the attached readings. It goes 803 to 904. So it's not even, if you scroll down, it's not even up there. So do I need?
So it's not attached. Okay, yeah.
However, I do appreciate that you called that out, Mrs. Lofton. We need to remove that. And I don't know, Mr. Subers, if there needs to be any adjustment at all. That that is a conversation we had during the committee. So my apologies for including it in the list. We'll take that back to Mr. Moran and bring it back to committee this month.
It can just be removed from the agenda for next week.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that.
I'm sorry, the motion will be to accept the resignation of Mrs. Beth Roberts from the NMTCC Joint Operating Committee. The term ends December 2022. Should we place that on consent?
No, it's just.
Yeah. So there's no objections, put it on consent. Item 9.04 is a motion to appoint Mrs. Kim Mayers to the NMTCC JOC to represent Perkylin Valley School District, replacing Mrs. Roberts in to finish her term through December 2012. And if there's no opposition, we'll put that on consent. Okay, and that ends my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Halas. That brings us to our closing items. Section 10.01, comments from the audience are accepted on any topic. I don't see any hands up. I'll just give just a moment to see if any hands come up. Okay, I'm not seeing any comments from the audience. That brings us to 10.02, comments from board members. Hi? Just, oh. Dr. Kohler.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Um, we talked about it a little bit during Mr. Weaver's presentation, but I think I would like us at some point to revisit the whole concept behind the activity fee and maybe even the parking fee. Those were things that were instituted before, I believe, any of us were on the board. So I think it's up, it's a good time to bring it up again and discuss it since there have been some concerns. And I had thought about this last year and then COVID happened and we never really got around to it. So I don't know if it's a finance committee discussion or which committee, but I would like to see us revisit that at some point.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing any other hands up. So before we adjourn, I do want to announce we will be having an executive session after the meeting for the purposes of discussing personnel. And that's, and with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.